Okay. All right, we'll begin. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on October 23rd, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on October 18th, 2024, and has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public the Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without a physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board located at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay. Claudia, can you call the role, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have my agenda in front of me. What's next?
Applications continuation of 760 Mount Lucas Road.
Yeah, we, we had no resolutions tonight. And so I guess the first, Derek, would you mind telling us the first one? My agenda does not have.
Yes, sir. It's 760 Mount Lucas Road. It's a C1 variance request to construct an accessory dwelling unit and related parking within the front yard and an exception to required setbacks.
And the case number is what? The what?
So it's 724-460.
Okay.
Z24, excuse me.
Jurisdiction, I assume.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Good. Who is it? Who's representing? I see the homeowners here.
Mr. Kennedy? Has got his hand raised?
There he is. Okay. Claudia, can you let Ryan in?
He's on. Ryan?
He is on, I think.
Ryan, you're muted.
And no.
I believe I've been led on as audio only rather than as a panelist. I don't know if I can share my screen this way.
No, I don't think you can.
Here we go.
Okay. Okay, do you, Mr. Kennedy, you want to give us kind of a summary of where we're at? And I believe you didn't finish the presentation when we.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee for Chris and Ronnie here tonight, the homeowners at 760 Mount Lucas Road. We've got two essentially witnesses that we started with last time and will kind of finish with. We got mostly through our engineering and homeowner testimony about the site and didn't get to our architect. But we appreciate the board sticking in extra couple of minutes late into the night last month to give us a little bit of feedback to know what other information you might want to see tonight. So if you recall, this is a very interesting site topographically with a stream running down the middle and a family looking to build an accessory dwelling unit for some aging and medical medically needy family members and trying to figure out where the best place to put it because their home is set so far back and the former township rule is that essentially anything in front of that back line of the front of the home is the front yard setback. Or excuse me, is in the front yard despite building something that probably looks like a house and would otherwise respect the rules for building a primary dwelling requires the front yard front yard setback variance. We talked about some of the constraints, but our plan here tonight is to bring back the homeowners. We took a few extra photos to talk about a couple of sites that I think board members had questions about and why they wouldn't work. So we'd like to walk through that. Have our then our engineer just a brief kind of overview of those constraints. And then we'll get into the architectural testimony desk, finally show you guys what this would actually look like. So with I believe everyone had been sworn in last time and remains under oath. If not, I'd be happy to have them sworn in again, though. That's.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm not sure if Ms. Rabina was sworn in because I don't think she testified the last hearing.
Got it. So Marina, if you'd like, we'll get that out of the way.
Ms. Rabina, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. So excuse me. So Ronnie and Chris, when we left last time, we, the board had some questions about location and some of the reasoning for why you were essentially doing this and why some locations would be appropriate. So you know, if you could, before we go through, finish going through our exhibits, just want to take a minute to talk again about or remind the board about, you know, what the plan is here and why some of the locations were more problematic than others, both physically for the site and with what your plans are for your family.
Yep. Sounds good. Do you want me to jump in here, Ryan?
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Yes, I think, thank you again for everybody the opportunity to come back and speak to you. Sort of recap right now, and Ryan hit on this a little bit. I am trying to manage my two aging parents, right? My mom is suffering from Alzheimer's. They live on Long Island and so trying to find a way to get them closer to me so I can help with as things get worse. With them is also my aunt. My aunt has been living with them and my family since she was a child. She was born with disabilities and is also handicapped and trying to basically solve for three aging adults that I live on Long Island. I don't have any other direct family members in the Northeast to help with caring for them. And when I learned about, my wife and I learned about the ADU options here at Princeton, it seemed like a no brainer, especially since it's designed for elderly, disabled, handicapped individuals. And that's when we start to pursue, you know, how that might look on our property. And I think what we'll go through here is try to share how we really consider the many different options. I think you'll see that our property is very unique. The topography is a little bit different, but I believe we found a solution that will have the least impact to our neighbors, least impact to the environment, and actually will be a nice addition to the property while being able to help to bring my family together.
Chris, thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, okay, I'd like to reshare our exhibits. Ms. Casey, this is essentially a continuation of our last slide. John, if we want to mark it again, we did reorder things a bit. So I don't know if we want to.
No, I believe it was. No, it was.
14, I believe, right?
Let's just. Oh, yes, you're up to slide 14.
Okay, so we'll start on 15 and so there's nothing that no one is, we're not thankfully not changing anything up here. All right. Here we are. Hopefully everyone can see my screen there. So Chris and Ronnie, so this is a kind of a marked up site plan with some coloring here and these numbered boxes here represent, I guess, places you and your architect went out and did some extra investigating and took some photos to kind of explain why some of these places that might on paper seem like developable spots, but why, why they don't, why they aren't working for your situation. So I guess we'll start with with number one. And when we rehearse this, I don't know if we, if I showed you this, this slide in between the photos, but I thought it'd be easier to show each between each one, we'll see this again so we can really orient ourselves from the, from the photos. So just starting at one, well, just first, you know, explain a little bit about what this, you know, this is in relation to obviously this is right next to your existing house.
Yeah. So, so this is looking at our front patio towards the road, right? And then in that area is part is sort of the extended area of which starts with a whole zone of trees, right? And large trees that then is extremely sloped and grades quickly down to that water structure, water mainway that goes to our property as well. So that if we were to build there, you'd have two challenges. One would be the slope that you see now in this picture. You see me there on the right side, Ronnie, my wife on the left side, and you quickly get a slope that continues both vertically as well as horizontally behind that, the drop off is pretty drastic along with the woodlands that are behind that, that then leads down to the front of the property.
So in the bottom right corner, that's your, essentially your front steps or front porch are the lead up to it. So.
Yep, that's, that's correct. So you're, you're looking basically out my front porch towards the road and then my driveway swerves to the left and then back around up to the street from there.
Got it. And where your car is parked here, this is kind of necessary to help you turn around and navigate as well.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, exactly. We use this. Once you pull up to the house to back out and be able to get out cleanly, we use this as a little back out area. From the, this was from the previous owners. That's how they had set it up to get to the property.
Next, the spot, we'll call it two. This is kind of maybe the closest to your neighbor and their yard and pool, but you know, we'll yeah, talk about that spot here. So let me take us through these, these photos here.
Yeah. So, so yeah, this, this is closest to that property line that that is adjacent to our neighbor's house, that first picture. You see my, that's my wife. This is looking up from the driveway up towards our garage. So this is a pretty, you know, sizable sloped, sloped area in this space. And then also fairly wooded. This is like the one little window where you can actually see up from that, we'll say the mid level of property up to the upper level where the garage is. And then if you take from where you are there and look right, this is the view of how close you are to the neighbor's property line. If we were potentially to put something here, it would be right next to the neighbor's property. It would also require the removing of several mature trees and then also be in an area where is really needed for large trucks to come in and out of our property here. And I think that might be tied into another number you have as well, Orion, but it, oh, no, it is this one. So, yeah, so this area, it's not a formal part of our driveway, but because of how much our driveway sort of turns, twists and goes ups and down, we do need a way for large trucks. We do get oil deliveries to be able to come and back out of our driveway and then be able to go back up the driveway towards the street. And this area is is key part of them being able to navigate in and out of our property.
And this, the center photo, that's your neighbor's house and pool there. So you would be kind of, if you could fit something here, you'd be peering, they'd be looking right at you and you'd be peering right down at them.
This would, this would be the closest spot to any, any of our neighbors' properties, right? This would be right next to our neighbor's property overlooking.
And so right where this two here, we were just looking, that's that area here where you were, you're talking about being able to, you know, a truck or a delivery truck or oil would they can't really get to you with if they navigate the skirt or curving slope driveway without needing to be able to turn around there.
Exactly. Otherwise, they have to try to go backwards, back into up the entire swerve of the driveway, down and up and back and forth, right?
It sounds like something they can maybe do once.
If they're lucky without hitting the bridge on their way back, but.
So we had multiple Amazon trucks trying to back out and get stuck.
Yeah, yes.
Next, we'll look at spot three here, which again, well, tell us what we're looking at here with the.
Yeah. So spot three, you're, you're looking at two sides of the same area, looking back up towards the house. This is part of that, that zone in between, we'll call that, that small stream that runs through the property and then also the home where the, where the driveway curves. This area also limited space here because of how steep it is, right? You see the, you seen that first picture looking up from me up to where Ronnie was standing very sloped here. And then it also is a heavily wooded land. So it would require, you know, now, you know, potentially building on something that's very extremely, extremely sloped as well as removing again, multiple mature trees that are in this space and also having limited options again for potentially large vehicles to navigate, pulling in, pulling out of there and turning around, right? I think that the two things that I did miss also with any of these options is in order to connect utilities, things like our sewer connections, water connection, whatever it might be, if we aren't able to somehow now tap into the existing lines, which for the sewer would be very difficult, we'd have to look at options of drilling under the existing, that, that little river water structure. We've had to do that in the past for connecting sewer the first time around for our home. And I don't think we, because it's a pump, we probably have to re-drill again for another, you know, connecting the rest of these utilities for, for this ADU location, right?
Right. Next, we'll show the chosen area and then some, some information about the, the front. So well, these are the, the possible contenders in the back. And now we'll look at the the, the front areas. Again, this is the the, the chosen location here. Is that correct?
Yeah. So this is, this is where our plans currently are designed where, you know, we felt was again, least impact to our neighbors and the environment, right? You, you see on that first picture on the left, this is looking from the street towards our property. What the, what that red line is supposed to represent is essentially that's pretty close to the height of the, the structure and we'll let Marina get into those details. But if I was, you know, trying to look at what that impact and what you'd see from the street, it's pretty well hidden because there is, you know, a little bit of a slope there. It is close to 50 feet back when you add that right of way. And then you do have, you'll have the shrubs and other hedges there to, to limit the view from the street.
Got it. And then so ultimately the, the ADU is kind of set because of the topography is kind of set down and will be quite screened.
That's correct. Correct. Yep. And then the right side is, we have talked about having a way to turn around, right? So pulling in and pulling out, we talked about last time is would be difficult from Mount Lucas Road, right? So having a way to be able to pull into the ADU and then back out and then pull back to, to Mount Lucas Road without having to back into Mount Lucas Road is what we were trying to to solve for here. So you'll see on this right side is looking at our driveway and behind it. And I think we might have, well, section five, we get into this some more, but you see this is the angle looking down to the road as well as some of that the drop to that showing that'll be a bit hidden in terms of the topography looking down.
So on, on the left photo of this, this paved area, that's the path along the street that the, the walking path along Mount Mount Lucas. And then on the right, we're looking at your driveway or is that the path again?
That's my driveway. That's correct. On the right. Yep.
And again, we're moving from four to the corner area where we're talking about having that turnaround area.
Yep.
Pushed, sorry, pushed the, the wrong, wrong arrow here. So apologies. Right. So what we're looking at here, other than a beautiful family.
Yeah. So, so yeah, this is my, my daughters and dog as well. But this is, so this is the area that we are talking about for that turnaround. I think there's, there's a few things trying to call out here is this is pretty close to essentially where we would saying we would have a little bit of space so people could back into and then back onto Mount Lucas Road. The, the trees that you see there are trees and I'll probably look to Jim to chime in on exactly what he calls it, but they are built around a utility structure that's there already that were came after the fact. We do have a utility structure that was from prior to us being around and even prior, prior generations to the, the home. But we do believe from from what we've seen so far, that there would be limited, limited if any impact to any existing trees or root structure because of this location as well as the fact that we really do have that, that utility structure that is there already and would likely be preventing the impact of any roots that are also in that space. But I know Jim, you might be able to hit on some clarifying items there to call that out.
Excellent. So before we get to back to our engineer, just kind of recap some of these constraints a bit, certainly happy to have the the homeowners available for any, any questions about the site. We'll be continuing to talk about that, of course, but that's what we have for recalling our homeowners here tonight. So Sheriff, it's all right. Happy to move to our next witness. Or if you'd like to pause for questions here, it's happy to.
Does anyone have any questions or should we wait until the end?
I think.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I think we could wait. And yet I'm okay waiting till the end. I did see earlier that one of the municipal engineers is here. So Mr. Weissman, between him and Derek, I may have some questions on you know, some of these alternative sites and with the homeowner applicant as represented and see if they concur or or have a different view as to something being extremely steep and then some of which trees would have to be removed and I mean, trees are self. I will have questions.
Start then. I'll, Mr. Kamalik, if you could say return, you never, I believe you were pre-qualified and sworn in last time and but perhaps reintroduce yourself, just to remind the, the board who you are and welcome, welcome back to.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Kamalik can show resources. I'm the site engineer for the project and, you know, provided testimony at the last hearing about the orientation of the ADU as well as the driveway and the pullout area. And I think there were some questions at the prior hearing as to trying to provide some additional detail to the other areas, say, for example, at the rear of the site. I think Mr. Floyd was interested in that in the vicinity of the existing home. So what we did is we took the survey for the property with the topographic contours, which do indicate how steep the property is based upon how close those contours are on the survey map. But we added some color for steep slope areas that actually exceed 25%. And you can see if we look at the map towards the rear and the driveway in that parking area, we have several areas in and around where retaining walls were constructed to provide that pullout area that Chris had spoken to previously for the fuel trucks in that upper left-hand corner of the site in between the side property line and the garage that you also saw in those pictures as well. So when you look at the areas of, and again, there are slopes that are slightly under 25% or between 20 and 25, but these are exceeding 25%. And you can see around the periphery of the existing dwelling as well as the area in the front of the existing dwelling between the stream and the existing dwelling. We have that large patch in the central area of the site, basically in the middle of the page that's heavily wooded and steep slopes. Now I would point out in that area where the driveway bends significantly that Ryan is highlighting here, that area there is approximately you know, 32 by 35 feet, for example. And when you spatially take a look at that available area and the areas at the rear of the site, then you look to the front at the size of the ADU that's proposed as well as the the access walk at the front and the one parking stall next to the ADU, you can see spatially that, that that area really there is too limited. Then you would get into the closer to the stream corridor and disturb those wooded areas. And then you can see that along the Mount Lucas frontage, when you take a look at the dark green throughout the site, which is basically the, the treed and wooded areas, you can see basically that postage stamp area within the front yard, which is pretty much maintained lawn and free of trees and other obstructions. And it's also in areas that don't have steep slopes in excess of 25% as well. So we thought that this picture would be representative of the existing wooded areas in dark green and then the avail, the remaining areas in white less the steep slope areas. And I think when you also take out the DEP regulated stream corridor and its buffers, which is the blue area in the central portion of the site, that's also a restricted area. It's at least our view that when you look at on, on a whole at all of the the unique characteristics of this property and the physical characteristics that make other areas difficult to locate the ADU, that this really was the ideal location up at the front in that open lawn, non-wooded area that we show on the plan.
Jim, a couple of just follow-up questions. Based on the slope and necessary curving of the driveway is, would it be possible to build right up to that driveway? Would there need to be some, I'll use the word buffer, but space in between a curved driveway like this and, and any kind of structure that would need to be kind of reserved to make sure you know, nobody hit it frankly, when they were coming up the mountain?
Yeah. I mean, I think we would need ancillary areas around the perimeter of the ADU in order to in a suitable way grade that in and provide some pedestrian accessibility at that location as well. And if you remember, one of the photos that we looked at previously sort of looking up that slope at that open area behind Chris and then Ronnie was further behind him at a very small stature in the background. That's why we took these photos with them in the photos so that you can see the topographic relief. It's pretty significant there. And really the, the slope in that area is what originally drove the location of the driveway and how that curves around. They were able to sort of navigate that steep slope by having that roundabout in that location to lessen the slope, at least to get the driveway in there. But I don't see that as a viable area just due to those spatial constraints.
Thank you. Happy to have our engineer and we, we kind of thought we got through his testimony last time, but wanted to bring him back. So happy to have him available for any, any.
And maybe, Ryan, maybe it makes sense to look in the upper right-hand corner where the, where the pullout or turnout area is relative to those trees that Chris had testified to. We do have a tree that's off property beyond the property line. We did measure the distance to that pullout area at 24 feet that Ryan is highlighting here, which is at least in our view, a substantial distance. And we don't see a negative impact relative to disturbance of that area for that particular tree. And to the left of the pullout area, we do have a couple 10-inch also sugar maples that have since grown up over the past, you know, few decades next to the utility vault that's located in that area. But like Chris said, due to the location of that vault, which is illustrated on here by the square next to the stairs or, or between the the stairs there and the pullout area that really you know, would block a large amount of the root structure. So even though it says, you know, it's 12 feet and we have several trees in that area, we don't see a a substantial impact. And, and also too, we're we're going to be just locating that pullout area just above the surface of the ground and building it up by maybe a foot or 18 inches in order to negotiate the grade. So at the end of the day, you know, our thought is that this pullout area would enable the most safe, the safest condition possible so that vehicles can exit their property by pulling forward and, and given Mount Lucas and its orientation as it traverses through the neighborhood, you know, that's really the ideal situation would be to pull out in that location. And we, we feel like it does serve that purpose.
And, and Jim, if one, it is, I think, as you said, to, to create that, you're actually filling rather than cutting into something. So if there were any concern, you'd be going essentially above it rather than down through them, but seem to be a good distance away from those from those canopies. But if you were to move this further back into the site, does that remain the same? Or do you then get closer to other trees and perhaps have even a a more challenging situation to allow that motion? Because I guess the slope goes from the right of the screen down and you'd have to be kind of cantilevered, you know, even further out as a.
Yeah, we would have larger larger retaining walls around the, the pullout area to negotiate that grade. And actually at the driveway location, it would be a not an ideal situation because the driveway is set. That's not, that's not really changing the existing driveway. So it would be difficult to translate it downhill. And certainly we wouldn't want vehicles backing downhill in that location if, if we could prevent that. So that's why we thought that this really is the best. And you know, from a common sense standpoint, the, the best solution here.
And, and Jim, just as a recap from what we, what you said last month on, on I guess essentially two of the technical variances for this area, two being the width of these two segments here of driveway essentially as you fall into these turnout areas from the main driveway and the other being the distance of this corner to the lot, I believe. I believe your testimony was that where where this was originally shown at four and three quarters. Feet and five is required that you could, it could be done so that variance is not necessary. And similarly, where this distance here. And then along the driveway here as it flares out to both the parking area and the turnaround. Twenty-two feet is the maximum width allowed and twenty-five and thirty was proposed, but that. Those could be accommodated without the variance as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, we took a look at that and we can make those slight adjustments to stay under that variance threshold for those two items.
So essentially with that, the only real variance. For this area that is needed is one on the, you know, I guess, technical assumption. That this is a parking space, even though it's not intended to be used that way, that that is within the front yard setback. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So with with that, and Jim, thank you for reminding me that we missed the the front, the questions on the front. Certainly happy to have Mr. Kamalik available for for any questions at this point. Our attention would be after after him to to go on to the architectural testimony and designs.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a question, Steve.
Sure.
Or or two, and it's it's regarding. You know, I I know very little about topography and what's buildable. And you didn't use the word buildable. You said it had a twenty-five percent. Slope. And I guess. Sort of very direct question. And I'll probably ask this of the engineer Wiseman for the borough, for the municipality. Is a twenty-five percent slope. Buildable or not buildable?
Well, the reason we used. That I referenced twenty-five percent is because that's. Twenty-five percent is your your threshold when you start to transition into. Non-buildable areas pursuant to the ordinance.
Okay.
Or restricted areas. So we just felt like that would be the right benchmark to use. If you're above twenty-five percent on a single-family. Dwelling lot. Then those areas would be restricted from. You know, construction unless you got a variance in order to do that. And and so that's that's the reason why that threshold was. Selected because it is referenced in the ordinance and, you know, it has some legitimacy relative to preventing erosion and. Disturbing. Slopes deeper than that from a constructability standpoint and then a maintenance standpoint going forward.
Okay, I I really appreciate that because I just don't have. Didn't have the knowledge base even about the ordinance related to excess of twenty-five percent. So you can build on in excess of twenty-five percent if you get a variance.
I'm assuming so because. Twenty-five percent, yeah.
Yes, I'm just trying to get that clarified, what it means. Because I actually don't know what it means and until you explained it.
Sure.
And I I do appreciate that. Explanation of that. So. Okay. That's my only question, really.
Mr. Kennedy, proceed. Oh, excuse me, board members, do you have any other questions before we move on to the next witness? Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, thank you. With that, I'd like to. Welcome, introduce, I suppose, our our architect, Marina Rabina, and ask her to. Briefly give her credential, and she's been before this board many times and. For her qualifications and then connection to this project.
We will accept her as.
Thank you. Rain, if you want to just briefly introduce what your task was here and 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 participation in. In both helping to choose the location and the design of the ADU.
Good evening. Yes, thank you so much for hearing this application this evening. And as you could see. Even though it's a large property, it is quite complicated and I worked closely with. The homeowners and our engineer Jim to find the ideal location for the accessory dwelling unit, which, as you could see, is not a small task. And from my standpoint, one additional. Limiting factor that we considered is. Although everything in front of the house is considered in the front yard, we also considered that there is a required front setback. And the entire building is located. Beyond that point. I think, Ryan, you may have the next slide if I'm not mistaken that. No, okay, well, we'll we'll demonstrate that on the plans moving forward. So our balancing act was the real. Constraints of the physical property, but also the zoning constraints that are mandated by ordinance. That we try to comply with as many of them as we could. And now, as Ryan is showing here, we have a view of the three D model that shows that. View from that pathway as we saw in the photograph where. We are not showing the shrubbery. Screen in the front because. It would basically block the entire model, but it shows you that it's a. Horizontal. Structure where you will see one story. It's a flat roof structure that presents a low. Facade to the street and it will have a lot of shrubs associated with it. And as you get to peak. You see the little ramp. Going up to the front. Ryan, are you able to point? Because I don't think I can point. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. So where that projects, that happens to be beyond the front setback. So we are balancing between not being too close to the stream. The entire building is beyond the setback line and that little portion of the ramp itself protrudes into the setback. Also, Ryan, could you go back for a second? It's worth noting that, and again, we'll show this on the plan. There is a large. Setback from the street, from the road itself to where the setback is. So not only we're within the setback, but there's also a large. Piece of land in front in the public right away. So let's skip to the next one. Again, as you could see, it's a one-story structure. You could see, so in order, it's. With all the slopes, it's kind of a substantial ramp, so we have to kind of go up, turn around, go back. So that's kind of where we end up with a extended ramp. Yes, thank you. So now you could see the ramp from the other side. And again, you start to see. All of the contours modeled in this. View where you could, this is not a realistic view, it's a cross-section, but it it gives you the sense that. And Ryan, if you could point to the ramp on the right-hand side, so you see you kind of go up and then you turn around and you go back to get to the front door. Thank you. Yep. And then. On the other side, we're making use of the slope where there would be. Windows facing the stream on the lower portion of the basement, but we're fully compliant with basement regulations. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Yeah, okay, so this is easier to see right here. So. As you can see, there's a car on the left-hand side. And then the ramp, can you try it? Yes, thank you. You kind of go back and then you come forth, thank you, through the door. And then there's open space and then there's one bedroom and a little accessible bathroom. And then the lower level, as Chris described. Is a space that he envisions would be used for his aunt. Right? Hopefully, I didn't miss anything. Yeah. Oh, this is the, this is the one we were looking for. Yes. So as you could see. That is the setback line. So if this was the borough. This wouldn't be an issue because we are compliant with the front setback, but we're in a township, so everything in front of the house. Is considered in the front setback. And the ramp itself is peeking out. And again, as you could see, it's kind of a balancing act. The further away from the street we move. The closer to the creek we end up being.
I'll just a couple of notes here.
Yes, perfect.
So this this blue line, that's the twenty-five-foot setback line. Now, obviously. As Marina said. Anything in front of the house requires this, but we wanted to show if if this were the house. Or a house and somehow the sizes were flipped. That's the compliant line. And what further what we've shown in red. Is that portion of the ramp or entrance stoop or whatever you'd like to call it, then again, under neighborhood character. Actually would be permitted to to encroach into that line. However, technically, accessory structures. Just don't have that. But if if either the house were demolished and this were the only structure here. Or if somehow the roles in in life could be reversed and, you know, the this were to be bigger, for example. Than the the house and that would be the ADU and this would be the main house. Then that would, our understanding would be that that would be, you know, essentially permitted and and the as-of-right location. Also note that this is, the site is unique in many ways, topography, environmentally, lots of lots of ways that that. Make design difficult. But another way that it is almost unique, possibly fully unique in in Princeton. Is it doesn't actually have a prevailing front yard setback. There's not enough properties around it. With structures that would to to calculate one. So ultimately. If you're looking for other guidance about where a structure should be put. There is no, you know, you you, when we asked and 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 they did it correctly, there's there's no, you know, the result is zero. You can't essentially divide by zero. For the prevailing setback. So the the twenty-five-foot setback that we're showing would be the. Required one. If this were to be. The actual home. And and again, while the technical. Measurement for an accessory structure would be to the front of this stoop. If it were a house, you actually wouldn't measure, our our saying would be you wouldn't measure it that way. Under these provisions of neighborhood character that understand that, you know, elements of front porches and stoops and and cover. You know, as if we point out here, are permitted to. Essentially go further or closer to to the to the street. However, Marina, this is a slide I think you were looking for as well.
Yes, thank you.
We we show that line from the lot line at twenty-five feet, but I think it's. Very important to show, and we talked about this a little bit at the end of the hearing, the wee hours of the morning last month. That. The lot line does not really represent. Distance from of the public here. It's what's how variances are measured. But ultimately, there's a lot more lie, a lot more property between. What we're talking about and the roads. Marina, want to go through that a little bit?
Yeah, I think if you zoom in, it becomes a little bit more visible because at least on my screen, it's a little bit. Yes, there we go. Much better. Thank you. So the dark gray. Is the street and the curb line, and then you can see the orange line is the property line where it's approximately where those. Kind of shrubs bushes are. And then. We're setback beyond the twenty-five-foot line, but then we have about just as much in front of it. So. We're effectively in the narrowest spot, we're forty-three and a half feet away from the road. And in sort of the regular, it's on the order of, you know, to the house, you know, some places it's fifty. Yeah, there you go.
On the right, this is the kind of street view that shows where the property line is in relation. So we're twenty-five feet from here back is what we've been talking about all. And then it shows some of the screening as well that would.
Exactly. And I think what's also really important to note that the further down. If we try to push the building further down, the harder it is to back out. Because the driveway is steep and then we would be again in the areas that are tree-covered. So in this case, we're kind of balancing, we're beyond the proper. Setback line and we could still back out relatively flat. I mean, as flat as it's going to get on this property. And then turn around and go back facing forward in the safest possible manner. So. Talk about a balancing act here. Yep. So I think that I am happy to summarize, but if anybody else wants to on my team to come back and summarize that. Again, it looks like a large property and it's absolutely beautiful and it's. A lot of interesting things going on. We feel that the structure found a really good spot to kind of nestle in, which is. Very much safer. It it doesn't require bringing utilities to the other side of the creek. Pretty much. Any other location on this property would also require front variances because, as you could see, the house is built so far. Close to the rear property line that pretty much. Anything and everything would be a variance condition. Let's see, so as as you remember, if we were to. Put something near the right-hand side property line where there are steep slopes and the turnaround for the oil truck. We would be right up against the neighbors and we would have to take down mature trees and really. Kind of ruin that forest feeling, not only for the residents of this property, but also for the next-door neighbors. Let's see, did I miss anything?
I'll be happy to 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 re-summarize again. I think I think you've got it, though. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, if if I miss anything, I'm here.
So so with that, you know, this now will be the time for us to. Obviously, make our architect available for any questions at the board or your professionals may have, Mr. Jim.
Board members, any question of the architect?
I I I do have a question. The lower floor, this is supposed to be compliant with handicap regulations, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah. And so if the lower floor is classified as a basement, does that exempt it from the regulations in terms of access?
It is accessible from the outside. So there is no interior connection from. But it is, it could be made accessible from the outside. Yeah, I see from the patio.
I mean, it looks like your staircases.
Yeah, there is no interior wheelchair accessible connection. You're right, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, I just have a housekeeping question. So. Your exhibit A one is thirty-seven slides because I'm looking at the bottom or thirty-six, I'm looking at the bottom of.
So thirty-six is, thank you, thirty-seven. We didn't, I don't expect to get to, but if we need to, is is a copy of the, a full copy of the topographic map. If any, you know, if it's needed for questions. So we we've. Only use thirty-six. Thirty-six being, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
May need to return this later when we have more questions, discussion, but. With that, I want to thank the board, both, you know, I know a lot of you came out. To to look at the site, to think about this as you always do for. Keeping with us late last night and giving us some feedback so we can be better able to answer your questions. This month and those of you, I believe, who, you know, watched the tape so they could participate if if that was the case, apologies if it was not, but thank you nonetheless for everything you guys do. Here, we've got a homeowner here with a challenging property. The the house was built way in the back, so essentially everything here requires a front yard. Setback variance to have this structure. This has been designed in a way that anyone driving by would think this is just the house. And would fully comply if it were just the house with with all of the requirements, essentially, we believe. In in the in the zone. On top of that. There is a generous extra area in front of the lot line between the right-of-way. The curb line and the lot line that provides extra. Buffering that along with the trees and shrubs in front, really created a situation where. A an ADU can be accommodated, particularly an ADA accessible one. For family members of the homeowners, but without any impact to the neighborhood or the plan, but only with benefits. And as we went through. The other possible locations, they all required had problems in some way and all of which actually required. Front yard setback variances themselves. And the the closest to another spot, you know, near the garage would have. One, be the only one that would have really any impact on a neighbor, being kind of perched above. The neighbor's pool in a way that it didn't quite seem neighborly and would require removal of more. Mature trees, still require that front yard setback variance. And unfortunately, not really solve anything other than possibly making it impossible for trucks and delivery vans. To get up to the house or the ADU because that's the one kind of flat-ish area. Where a fuel truck or somebody who can navigate up there and and actually turn around. Where a fuel truck or somebody who can navigate up there and and actually turn around. So with that, you know, we we thank you for your time. I hope you. Agree that the the benefits of this certainly outweigh any detriments or reminder that we've been able to. Through, you know, stipulated redesign, remove many of the variances, particularly the technical ones about driveway width. That was two variances and the parking setback. From the side yard variance and and perhaps with other conditions, you might think that that's, you know, none of those variances are even. Needed because it's our position that we don't intend that to be a parking spot, just a thing that's the size of a car. Where someone can K turn out and get out without having to go all the way up the driveway to that. Gate turnaround area and then back again if you're the the ADU user. This is a a sensitive site and we think that our design is. Quite sensitive to it, tucking this in really the only place it could go. But that's not a concession. It's a it's a the place where this site speaks to and and kind of invites it and by tucking it. Into this location, building it interestingly in a note very. Not impactful way that kind of opens up into. And relates to the stream quarter and and kind of builds that like a that walkout basement feature into the the slope is something that is. Both very usable for the 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 family members who will be living there. And not impactful to either neighbors or to anyone really trying to drive by to see it. And we do hope as a as a. Myself being someone who lives on a fairly busy road that people would never drive by, you know. Fast too fast that they would be able to see it, but unfortunately, that is the the way that this road works that you're probably never driving slow enough to to actually. See what's happening here. So with that, much appreciated your time and always happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Board members, any questions of the attorney or the witnesses? Yes, Todd.
I'm trying to get a handle on the variances you're still asking for. And the variances you're no longer asking for and whether your plans. Reflect that you don't need those other variances. So I guess I'm asking the engineer perhaps.
While while he's queuing up, I I'll do my attempt to summary, to summarize. And Mr. Bridger's memo, there are four items listed. Item one, we do need, that's essentially the variance for anything on this site. Because it's in front of the house needs that variant. So the front yard, yes, we need that. And two, the front yard parking setback. While we're not, we don't believe that what we've created is a parking spot. We are asking for that variance because technically it's the size. You know, we don't want someone to park there. That's not the intention, but a car could fit there. So I think that makes it a parking spot. So with that, that K turn area. Is within the front yard setback.
Okay, and you haven't changed anything for that. Okay.
The other three and four are minor changes that while we haven't redone the plans, if if you agree that these other things make sense. As a condition, we would alter the plan so that those variances are not needed and we are not asking them for them this evening. So that's three and four. We're not requesting.
Okay. And the plans can be redrawn to show that. I mean, it's it's not.
Correct.
It's doable and.
Yeah, I I can just weigh in and just say that the side yard setback at four point seven five feet, I think that was scaled off the plan by Derek. With his best ability to scale it off, but the intention was always for it to be five feet off to comply. So that's a mute point. It will be five feet. And then in our slide presentation. I analyzed the reduction to the twenty two feet on both driveways. In red, we highlighted that and labeled it. So we do did confirm that that does in fact work and it's memorialized on. The slide that we viewed last time, just showing the twenty two foot wide entrances to the pullout area and to the ADU parking spot.
Okay, thank you. And and Derek, we. Does that all sound right to you?
Yeah, I mean, that's not a big lift.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. Mr. Kennedy, we're gonna open this up to the public. Do you want to say anything? You haven't said before.
No, just to thank you again. I did say that before, but I'll say that one again. Thanks.
Okay, all right. We're gonna open this meeting up to the public. If there's anybody in the audience. That would like to speak to this application, indicate that by raising your hand at the bottom of the screen. And you'll be recognized. Claudia, have we gotten any? One who's indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay, we'll give it a couple of seconds here. Okay, all right, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. And again, Mr. Kennedy, we're gonna go into executive session, but if you'd like to sum up.
Thank you again for for your time last month, this month. I really especially appreciate. That extra few minutes you guys took just to give us a little bit of feedback to help us understand what to bring back. The applicant is very appreciative of of that extra kind of. I don't say help, but you know discretion so we knew what. How best to answer the question you had, and that's the kind of thing that honestly, which every board would would do that. It saves the applicant a lot of time and. And money and helps get a better product for you guys. So I just want to thank you again for for that little bit of help last month and and. Hope that you can help this homeowner welcome their extended family to their home here in Princeton. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, we are in executive session. Questions, comments, discussions or a motion?
I have a couple, couple of questions, Steve.
Yes.
And really, it's, well, the first question is of either Derek or Derek and or Dan Weissman. I saw he was sort of listed earlier. You know, in in the memo, you asked us to ask about alternative sites. I always find that difficult because the technical answers, most of us don't have. The background to decipher. The testimony. Now, you've heard, both you and Dan have heard some comments regarding the sites. The the twenty five percent, the. Closeness to the neighbor, whatever, but do you have any comments on? On the information now that's been submitted that pretty much you folks requested?
No, I mean, I think it's helpful to see. The areas mapped out to demonstrate. I mean, that's the proof of this case. Built somewhere else that complies and I think. You know, you, he's correct, you can't build on the twenty five foot. Or excuse me, the twenty plus five percent steep slopes. There are the environmental constraints. The trees. So I mean. That's the proof that's required, I think, to. To address the the positive and negative criteria and you guys have to decide, you know, whether. They've done that or not. So I think it's 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 a good illustration of the challenges on the lot.
Okay, and I guess with the twenty five percent. I gotta stick with that. You have experience on. Do do people go for a variance and and eventually build on the twenty five or greater than twenty five? I have no idea.
I I haven't seen any residential houses. It's it's. A residential restriction on on anything really, but no, I haven't seen any. On that type of steep slope.
Yeah, that that helps a lot, helps me a lot.
One comment if I might. Michael, I don't know what the zoning regulations are, but we used to live in Los Angeles and in the Hollywood Hills, you have amazingly steep. Grades where the engineering is quite complicated, but houses are built. I have no idea what the zoning requirements are there, but technically it's feasible. To build on very steep slopes, whether it's wise to do it in an earthquake zone, I wouldn't, but people do.
You're.
Yeah.
Exactly right, George. And in the in the West and California, there are a lot of homes on steeper slopes, but. That's the way a lot of the land is.
I have. One more question for Derek. And it's it's just regarding.
Dan, if you're gonna testify, I just need to swear you in quickly. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, Mr. Floyd, I just wanted to just. Bring one point of clarification as we're talking about the steep slopes. What the ordinance envisions as a variance for steep slopes is based off topography of ten foot intervals. So it it doesn't look at extremely localized steep slopes if if it was a twenty five percent over, say, a foot or two. It looks for larger areas of of steep slopes. So I haven't reviewed in detail the plans that were prepared here tonight. But it does appear that a good amount of the steep slopes that were shown on the exhibit. Are twenty five percent slopes.
When you mentioned, I'm sorry, it's my lack of knowledge. The ten ten foot intervals or whatever. What is that? Is that just from one height to the next?
It's a ten foot height differential. So if that that if it's twenty five percent over a ten foot height differential, so. You almost look at it as a twenty five percent would be ten foot over, say, forty feet long. And that would be a twenty five percent slope.
Oh, yeah.
So if it was if it was a one foot over four foot, that's that wouldn't be considered a steep slope. You more look at it on a more topographical scale.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, my other question, Derek, it's just what you're seeing. I was wondering if you can respond. Are there, have you seen many applications looking to build an ADU? In front of the principal building?
I mean, there was the one on Valley Road. I think that was moved back. That's that's the only one I've seen. You know, since that, I haven't seen any others at at this point.
Okay. And that helps too. And I think the only one other one that comes to mind to me were. There was a temporary proposal, alternative proposal on Ewing Street, I believe. And and the planning board.
Right, right.
Pushed that.
I was thinking zoning board, but you're correct, planning board, yep.
But if there's no others, that's good too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, board members? Okay. I actually think after looking at all the alternatives for the various areas on the site to build, that this is the most logical. And least intrusive. So I would agree with the engineer, the architect, the owner and the attorney. Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
No, I I have a few more comments. If no one has anything else to say, they can go before me if somebody does. My my struggle. And. There's been a lot of good information tonight that helps me. Is is that the ADU ordinance has some principal. Sort of tenants. One is related to height, one is, you know, a lot size. The ADU is supposed to be behind the main. That's and and no one's. Sort of mentioned that that might be a. Important tenant of ADUs. Now, I'm glad to hear that there hasn't been a lot of other. Initiatives to put ADUs before the main building. But that's sort of the big issue for me. And the fact that the main building is so far back and that this this site is. So hard to manage because of the topo. I recognize that. You know, when we talk front setback, we're talking front step back from the main building. Not from the street. Alternative sites, trees. Can be replaced. Closeness to the rear property line. If my rear neighbor builds an ADU. They can build it up to the setback. It'll be close to me. Almost all ADUs will be. So the closeness to the rear neighbor, I think, has been overly stressed. I really appreciate the clarity. From the engineers on the slopes that has helped me. And those are. My basic comments and what has been in my thoughts in the last two meetings of trying to understand this.
Thank you. I I don't totally disagree with you on the location of the ADU, but in this case, I think they've proven that the. The site is a difficult one and trying to put the ADU behind the main dwelling would be. Although maybe compliant. And the closest to the neighbor, you're right, that's just the nature of the ADU. But in this case, I think it's it's justifiable not to do that. In my opinion.
Yes, respect to your opinion. Won't won't debate you on the importance of the ADU being. Behind the front yard setback line will not. I think the site is is very, very difficult and as I say, now I have a better understanding of slopes. Topography, you know. I I hope a few of the other board members have gained some knowledge. And. Yeah, I'm ready to move on.
All right. Any other questions, Michael?
No.
Board members? Question or motion?
I move we accept this proposal. As drawn and not ask them to. Narrow down the. Drive way or the round spot.
Board members, I just had one question for you. Looking through Derek's memo and the testimony. The applicant has argued that this location, the chosen location, would mean no removal of mature trees. Is that a condition the board wants to add? Similarly, I think Mr. Chimalik testified. They would protect the critical. Zone around nearby trees. I don't know if you want that to be a condition. So. It's your emotion, Stephen. I don't know if you want those to be conditions.
I don't, but somebody else could add them if they wanted to.
Okay, I I when when Stephen, when you. Brought it up initially, I didn't quite understand the whole motion.
Let me repeat it. I I move for acceptance of the proposal with the four variances. Not with just the two.
But Stephen, they're not seeking the four variances anymore. I don't I don't I don't want to speak for Mr. Kennedy.
I didn't hear him say that. I I heard them say that they were willing to. Take them off the table if we insisted on it.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
Well, just to clarify, Mr. Kennedy, are you looking for two variances or four?
And like what I just heard, I I think we've been looking for for four variances. We again, we could redesign it to make it work, but it is it is not. A better design from our perspective to to restrict those pitch points and restrict the K turn area more. Or desire, we would make it work, but that's.
I'd like to make a comment too, Steve, if I might. And and that is, I agree with Michael wholeheartedly about the. Put in the ADU in front of the house, but I think this property is such, the sightlines are such that. Really kind of negates all that. So that's that's why I'm. Positively disposed.
And. Okay, and we have, who seconded the motion?
And I I just want to make a comment on Karen's comment about the trees. And the critical root zone. That's not really a zoning, it's not in the zoning code, so we can't grant. That's not really a, a zoning, it's not in the zoning code, so we can't grant a variance from that. So that'll have to be sorted out when you know, the engineering and the plans come in.
So we could, I mean, basically, we are suggesting, we're mentioning it in our, in our um, motion. Would that trigger the engineer taking a look at that and?
Well, I mean, that's part of the, the normal process on this type of compliance review. But you, I don't think you can grant a variance for something that's not in your code.
No.
Difficult. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call a roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck and, uh, thank you for all the information, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah.
The architect, the engineer, and especially the homeowners. Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Okay. All right, so give it a second here. We have our next application is case number Z twenty-four dash five nineteen seventeen Armor Road. Lot ten point oh two, lot twenty-seven in the R one dash B zone. Karen, are the notices in order?
They are, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight.
Okay. Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. Linda Lynch, or excuse me, Lydia Lynch and Paula Grady are the owners and applicants of Seventeen Armor Road. They are seeking a C two variance to permit the construction of a rear two-story addition in exception to the required combined side yard setbacks in the maximum permitted length of a side-facing wall. Properties in the R one B zone in the former Princeton borough. Um, it's non-compliant with regard to the required one hundred and twenty-five foot lot width, the existing is one hundred feet. And the existing house is non-compliant with regard to the combined side yard or the smaller side yard setback requirement of ten feet, the existing six point seven. Um, and the combined side yard requirements thirty, existing's twenty feet, and it's, uh, non-compliant with a required one point five to one height to setback on the right side, the east elevation. The applicant's proposing a two-story addition to the western elevation of the subject property and the the floor space will be comprised of a bedroom. The first floor space will be, and the second floor space will, eh, eh, expand the master bedroom. They need a variance from the combined side yard requirement of thirty, the proposed is nineteen point five. And the maximum length of a side-facing wall is section seventeen A four oh three. Um, C two A, and it's in neighborhood character, is forty feet, and their wall, um, extends past that, um, forty-three point three feet, three feet. So I think they're gonna, um, the actual dimension scales out a little longer, but that, that's what they've set on is at forty-three point three three feet. And they're requesting consideration under the C two criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I do have a question. It appears, looking at the house, that what is called the exercise room may have most probably been a garage at one time. And there, when the garage was converted, I believe, it looks to me also like they added the the little connector between the kitchen and the garage to, to allow for a covered and enclosed passageway. If that remained a garage and that little addition would not have was not built, would we comply setback-wise with this?
Yeah, I believe so. I'm just.
Okay, so then, and you don't know when all that work was done, do you?
No, I don't. No.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to ask because that's sort of the same thing appeared when I went out to look at it and looked at the drawings. Okay. All right, um. Okay, so who, Mr. Kennedy, you're shaking your head, so I assume you're representing the owners, right? Okay, please begin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, again, members of the board, uh, Ryan Kennedy from Stevens Lee, uh, for the new homeowners. Uh, we've got, uh, uh, Lydia Lynch here this evening, uh, and our architect Jeff Fleischer. Um, as Derek said, this is an pre-existing non-conforming home. Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think you have it exactly right. We, it's, this is a new homeowner who recently purchased the house, but are sleuthing into trying to understand how this house came about, lines up pretty closely with your assumptions from driving by. We looked into, gosh, if that was the garage, how much of it can extend into the side yard setback on that side? Um, it does, the, the story does kind of line up with the existing non-conformity that that was a garage at one point, um, which could, uh, under neighborhood character, you know, peek out, yeah, that way, even into the smaller, uh, setback. But here, this, uh, new, uh, addition to Princeton, um, uh, the size of the family, they need another bedroom. And the, the logical place here is to put it, um, behind the current one that would allow, um, one, uh, the construction of the bedroom and the and kind of rearranging of a small second floor addition as well to kind of expand, uh, the master bath. We, we looked at a couple of, and we'll show you essentially, um, other places this could go if you slid it over to comply. Uh, unfortunately, just with connecting to the existing home, none of it really worked. So we'll, we'll show you the, the screening, uh, with the neighboring property. It is, uh, quite, uh, unique, um, not that there are trees, that's not quite unique to a house, but the way that these homes were constructed, uh, were kind of staggered so that, um, this property is set back. Uh, the one next door where that is closest to this, um, is set forward so that there's kind of a yin and yang kind of situation, uh, that makes for a good setback, um, conditions, uh, in addition to the screening. A- as Mr. Bridger kind of noted, we're here for combined side yard setback. So the smaller is ten, the zone contemplates ten being, um, acceptable. We are, uh, further away from that. We'll, we'll show you that as well, but technically, uh, this is supposed to be the big side. So our nearly thirteen feet really should be, uh, a bit bigger than that because you have to get to thirty between the two sides. And as, um, you know, from driving by or our understanding of the, the makeup of how this home came to be, it's likely that a garage was converted on the right side and that garage would have been okay. And the more it was converted, the more that that became the small side, unfortunately, and then kind of threw off uh, and created the, the, the existing non-conformity that we're unfortunately stuck with. So that's, that's the, the core variance really is to allow us to build, uh, a, a small addition, uh, for a bedroom here for, for this family in the one place that makes sense, uh, that the setback on that side is already fixed. So honoring it or keeping it as is, uh, makes sense. We're also replacing a patio. Uh, so, uh, there's, uh, already, uh, um, impervious surface there and a, and a hot tub, actually. So from a, um, perspective of, um, proximity to neighbors and activities actually may be a bit of an upgrade to, to go from home, you know, hot tub to home, though, that we're not familiar with any particular complaints or the homeowner hasn't, uh, uh, isn't aware of any. But, you know, making, changing that from a very active outdoor use to, to a bedroom, uh, um, actually is, is, uh, perhaps a bit of a benefit. There is, secondly, that neighborhood character sidewall articulation variance. Forty is the maximum length that is permitted. We are a little over that, about forty-three and, and, and change, uh, feet. We'll show you, though, that the idea behind sidewall articulation is visual interest. One, there's, uh, plenty of trees keeping anyone from enjoying any visual interest here. But two, you'll see that the, the way it was designed, it does have that in different ways. There's different materials being used, uh, different roof lines, the addition doesn't go the whole, uh, distance and height. It is broken up in many different ways that if you could see it and likely you'll see that you can't, it would, uh, actually be visually interesting and kind of, uh, broken up in, in different ways that are not the traditional physical articulation, uh, way. So, um, with that, we'll have two witnesses, uh, this evening, perhaps, uh, Lydia and, and Jeff, our architect, could be, uh, sworn in now when we can, uh, get their testimony.
If they can unmute themselves. Ms. Lynch, I, oh, there you go. Uh, do you both swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, uh, with that, we have our, uh, again, I'll, I'll note, i- the screen will say fourteen slides. Um, one of them is thank you, and one of them is something, uh, I don't think we expect to show. Uh, so I'll say it's thirteen unless there's a, uh, um, a, a need to show a fourteenth one.
All right, so that will be exhibit A one, okay?
That's all right, share my screen. I'll, I'll do that and, and, and ask Ms. Lynch if you could introduce yourself, uh, and uh, give the board the, the, the quick story of the, the need for your extra bedroom here and, uh, what you've done with, uh, uh, Mr. Fleischer to, to, to look at this and, you know, your connection here to the Princeton community. So welcome.
Thanks very much, Ryan, and thanks to everyone on the board for giving us the time. I just want to say tonight, I'm not at home tonight because my best friend has just arrived from Ireland and I've had to go into New York to collect her. And I've found a building which seems to be the quietest, but it's not completely quiet. And so I have moved here from Boston, originally from Ireland. I moved here from Boston, um, in the summer. I was recruited to be a professor at the university, professor of molecular biology. And, um, we bought the house in April, we moved in in June. And we have three children, but the, the, the house has only got three bedrooms. And so we would like to build a fourth bedroom so that each child can have their own bedroom. And just want to say, um, I absolutely love living in Princeton so far and by far the most beautiful place I've ever lived.
Ryan, you're muted.
Ryan.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that. Uh, um, uh, so, Ms. Lynch, thank you so much. Um, uh, if you could, uh, I know you're new to the, to Princeton, but just, uh, I'll take you through a few slides here just to orient the board. Uh, this, uh, this first one's the zoning map that blue arrow points to your, uh, new to you home on Seventeen Armor?
Yep.
All right. And then as we kind of scroll in from, uh, arrow map, I guess you, uh, that blue box is, is where the house is. And that's Route two oh six, uh, kind of highlighted below you.
Yes.
And I guess the road that you're quite familiar with to get to, to work every, every day.
Yeah, yeah. I walked that war, road.
Uh, as we get a little closer in, you can see the, the neighborhood view here, uh, with Elm kind of shown, uh, to the top left, and then again, uh, uh, two oh six kind of at, at the bottom, that's your house in, in blue there with the green pin.
Yes.
All right. And then, uh, lastly, again, before we switch over to the architect, um, uh, just if you could give us, uh, you know, kind of a few words here. Uh, I think on the right shows the basic sketch plan of the current house. Uh, it does show, as, as the chairman showed, that what probably was a garage that kind of eaked towards the neighbor on the other side, uh, but then show the, um, uh, green being the outline of the current house. And this arrow pointing to where, you know, the logical place for you to put this, uh, uh, new bedroom. And, and I guess on the left, one of our first of a couple of attempts to, to show the, both the positioning of the your neighboring home that's closest and, and the trees nearby, anything, um, I think, uh, maybe the next slide will be better to, to show that. But ultimately, there's a, a, a lot of screening in between your, uh, your house and, uh, and, and your neighboring house.
Yes, yeah, there's lots of trees on, on either side.
So, uh, next on slide six, I think these are photos of the current hot tub and patio that you plan to build over. Um, again, uh, has this gotten a, a lot of use and, uh, um, any, any kind of interaction issues with it being, you know, too close to the neighboring, uh, property or, you know, visible or anything like that?
No, but it's actually further away from the, the neighboring property because as you mentioned, they're closer to the road.
Got it.
And we can't see the, their garden or anything.
So with that, I, I don't know if there's any questions for the, the homeowner, but, uh, um, would like to, uh, next would go have the architect kind of start going through the, the program, but happy to have uh, Ms. Lynch available for any, any questions that, um, the board may have.
Okay, thank you. You want to swear, or we swore the architect in, um, I believe Mr. Fleischer has testified before us before.
Yes, and actually, I think I've been in the last four meetings.
Okay. I know you look familiar. Okay, so we, we will accept you as a, as an expert.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so Jeff, uh, uh, slide seven here, we've got the kind of, the existing, um, house here with the setbacks line, but why don't you just briefly give the board, you know, what, what you were asked to do here and what constraints you had to deal with?
Right, well, the, the program was to add a, a fourth bedroom, um, and we explored adding on the second floor over the old garage. But this was the most logical place on the site to add the bedroom, um, didn't increase lot coverage. And it, it's in the backyard. And this didn't block views from the back of the house. Block views from other rooms. So to build the, uh, the first floor addition, we had to, uh, eliminate a closet that contained a hot water heater uh, to gain access to the new bedroom that'll be built over the hot tub patio area.
Right, um, moving, apologies to slide eight here. Blue arrow shows the, the patio area that's being converted to, um, excuse me, um, to the small addition, and that's kind of highlighted in blue on the first floor and the second floor. And if you could, I know, um, uh, uh, first, it was very clear to me, the first floor is going to be that new bedroom. Just talk a little bit about the second floor. I know there's.
Right, and so then, so the second floor was, um, we took the opportunity to build over this first floor addition to expand the, um, primary suite bathroom to, uh, include a, a bathtub as well as a balcony looking out at the backyard.
And so, uh, I could hear some of those, uh, it's the rear elevation and the side elevation, which is the most, I'll say, interesting, and I don't mean from a perspective of it being visually interesting, though I, I do mean that too, I guess, but the, this is, would be the, the part that's closest to the closest neighbors would be this bottom left elevation. Is that right?
Right, so on, on the second floor, there was his existing shed dormers in the, uh, primary suite bathroom. Um, so we continued those dormers as well as projected the, uh, the gable end roof. We stepped back at the second floor for the balcony to break up that facade. Um, we're also maintaining the, um, dormer end fascia, um, fascia boards, sorry, rakeboards, um, to break up the facade. Um, there's also the first floor has brick that existing area, and then the upper area is the, the clapper siding.
So we, we, we looked a little bit about what it would mean to take this and move it over to be compliant. And while that would, you know, create some new impervious area and, and not make a, you know, kind of create this like dead zone. Um, it also would have the problem, I suppose, of not really being able to connect well with the, the, certainly the bathroom on the upstairs. So as the yellow is that kind of area that, uh, where you have to kind of line up the new construction with the, 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 the dormers and, and eaves to have some place to actually, um, you know, connect.
That's correct. It, it would also block the, the view from the existing, um, rooms on the first floor and second floor.
And it, the, uh, while it's, while is it a, it is a story for the, the bathroom on the second floor. Uh, I believe the ceiling heights are, are not quite, uh, uh, you know, they, they count as floor area, but not full ceiling heights, right?
That's correct. Yeah, it's more of an attic space than a than a traditional second floor.
And the red lines here are shown, that, that's the setback that we're required to, to meet the combined thirty foot, you know, this is, we're essentially respecting and keeping with the existing setback, uh, from the neighboring property, which is, uh, much more than the minimum ten required. But again, to get to the minute, to the thirty foot combined because of the six feet essentially that the old garage was on the other side, you, you end up with this is where the compliant line would be.
Right.
Um, so this slide eleven here is meant to kind of talk a little bit about the articulation variant. So that red line shows where forty feet would be and where you'd have to step back to, to meet that requirement. But, but you know, just talk through again, you know, some of the, I'll say, visual interest elements that you've got here that you know, maybe that's not a full technical substitute for articulation, but that, um, you give the visual interest and, and break up the space.
Yeah, we, we have the, uh, the dormer shed roof, and then we have the, the rakeboards on the existing house. And then the, the different materials between the addition and the existing house as well as the, the balcony, um, setback at the second floor. Um, and i- if, if we did only go out the, the forty feet, we would have a bedroom that's a little bit less than nine feet deep.
So as, as the sign.
From the closet.
Yeah, for the last few feet of it, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, and then here again, just a reminder of the photo from the, you know, essentially across location where this will be built. Perhaps showing the, you know, that gable, again, it is a story, but you know, that attic-like space that's being extended with the dormer and that, you know, the, the current roof line that's being extended and then Jeff, I guess this on the right is, is a overhead, this is the armor road to the left here. Showing the location of the house, the current patio where the addition will go and then to try to show the relation to the house next door. Interestingly, if you were to try to go above the old garage on the other side or, or anything in that area, you'd be much closer to a neighbor than you would be here, is that right?
That's correct, yes, yeah.
Apologies for, for coughing at everyone, but with that, if there's any questions for our architect, happy to, to, to have him available now.
Board members, can you take your screen down, Mr. Kennedy? Board members, any questions of the architect? Mr. Kennedy, can you take your screen down, thank you. Okay, so there are no questions of the architect. Michael, you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Alright. I was out there, I looked at it today, I walked along that side yard. There is a very, very dense screen adjacent to the house and it's, so I was concerned about the imposition this would be on the adjacent house and I don't see any. I do like the fact that the forty-three feet is to the end of the first floor portion and the, that additional three feet is only for the forty-three feet is to the first floor and that that steps down and the balcony in the back is not covered, so that opens it up a little bit more. Alright, Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything else?
Well, no, just again, I want to thank the board for considering this. As, as always happens with, with the challenges of existing home layouts, you, the and kind of trying to modernize a bit for a, a growing family to right-size the home, we, they we, we do our best and I, I think the architect here did a nice job of respecting the neighbor doing this in the least intrusive way and ultimately it, it is a, a cork with the combined setbacks, particularly where what, what should be the big side is the small side, so we are, you know, should that, what, had this remained the big, the, the small side at ten feet, we comply and then some with the setback. It's the, the quirk of how the house was, kind of developed through the years that, that caused us to get here and with that limitation, we, we feel that this, this design is the best way to, to get this without any significant detriment really to, to the neighbors, but to allow it to be modernized, so with that, again, thank you so much.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna, is there any, no other questions of the architect or the owner or the attorney? I'm going to open this up to the public. If anybody would like to speak on behalf of this application, please indicate that by clicking on the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak to this application?
There are no hands.
Okay, give it a couple of seconds here. Okay, we'll close the public portion of the hearing, once again, Mr. Kennedy, please sum up.
Again, thank you so much. Hopefully with the, the, the screening, the, the the lack of new impervious coverage, again, we're removing a patio essentially to build this and, and removing a, a, a outdoor pool, which may have, not to say was a nuisance, but ultimately probably a lot more impactful than a, than a bedroom would be on any kind of neighbor, so from a, from a perspective of, of dealing with the neighbors, any negative detriment, I think you should have heard or be comfortable that there, there isn't any to be had here and the, the benefits certainly outweigh that, and again, on the, the sidewall articulation, that's a, a tough one as always, it, it's the ideas to create that visual interest for neighboring property, we, we believe we have it here and, and that combined with the screening results in a situation that is going to be of no, no negative impact to, to the neighbors or the the zone plan, so with that again, thank you so much for your time here tonight.
Okay, you're welcome, alright. Board members, we're going to executive session now. Does anybody have any comments? Any discussion we should have, or if not, someone would like to make a motion?
Yeah. I the, the elevations and the articulation that you see, that you will see in real life, it, it, I think is acceptable, the, the plan made it appear that it, it, it might not be, you know, when you just see that it all aligns, but I think in reality with the balcony and looking at the gable end of the house, it's acceptable and I would move to approve it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion before we go down? Okay, Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Ms Chen?
Yes.
Ms Coulson?
Yes.
Mr Floyd?
Yes.
Mr Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr Stein?
Yes.
Ms Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I walk by this house every evening. Okay. Our next case is coming up, I have to recuse myself and Mr. Schreiber will take over. I'll see you all next month.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene at nine fifteen. I think we're all back, is that correct? We're still being recorded. So the next case is file number Z twenty-four dash four seven one. Karen, are we in order? You're muted. Karen, you're muted.
The noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you very much, Derek, would you like to summarize your memorandum?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, an application has been filed with the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment by twelve dash sixteen Witherspoon Holdings LLC seeking minor site plan approval, conditional use authorization and D relief for a deviation from a conditional use standard and bulk variance relief to convert the second floor of a joint occupancy building from a residential to a non-residential use and to install a detached walk-in refrigerator in the existing parking lot behind the building at twelve sixteen Witherspoon. The subject property is located within the central business district, it's comprised of point two-two acres, it contains two joint occupancy buildings that front on Witherspoon Street and a six-spaced parking lot towards the rear with vehicular access to Palmer Square. Twelve fourteen Witherspoon is a one, two and three-story structure currently occupied by Small Roll Coffee on the first floor and residences above. And fourteen and a half to sixteen Witherspoon Street is a one, two and three-story structure currently occupied by Arlie's Raw Glens on the first floor with offices and residences above. Sixteen Witherspoon was most recently occupied by Killens on the first floor, but is currently vacant. The site contains a pedestrian alley toward the southern end of the site between the structure at twelve Witherspoon and the rear structures fronting on Nassau as well as a trash compactor adjacent to the parking lot in the rear. Sites bordered by the Nassau Inn on Palmer Square to the we, the west and business and mixed uses to the north, south and Witherspoon Street to the east. The site was before the planning board in December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen for reconstruction of fourteen dash sixteen Witherspoon included the construction of a six-spaced parking lot. There were several variances proposed. The addition required three parking spaces. They were given a variance for that, there was parking setbacks where a four-foot was required, here was proposed and there was open space for residential uses where sixty square feet per unit was required and none was proposed. There was a loading dock variance where one is required and none was proposed. And then there was a reduction in the parking stall size from nine by nineteen to eight by seventeen. And there was finally a, a side yard setback reduction from where twelve feet is required and five was proposed along the north line at sixteen Witherspoon. The applicant is now seeking minor site plan approval to convert the second floor of sixteen Witherspoon from two residential units to a non-residential use for a seating area associated with the first floor bakery use. The applicant is proposing to construct a twelve-foot by sixteen-foot walk-in freezer box in the parking lot at the rear, which will remove two parking spaces. The applicant has requested waivers from the below checklist items and staff has no objection to the granting of these waivers. Item A five B, which is a fire protection narrative, item A nine F in Archaeological and Historical Site Survey and A nine G, in Archaeological and Historic Sites Construction Protocol. And A nine H, which is delineated historic protection area or pre-mapped historic protection area. I will also add that historic preservation did look at this application, however, since there weren't any exterior changes visible from the public right away, they did not review it. The property is located within the CB zone and the the proposed application requires a conditional use authorization and a D three variance from a deviation from a conditional use standards in bulk variances described herein. Section seventeen A three oh seven permits the construction of part of a residential portion of a joint occupancy building to a non-residential as a conditional use provided that the following conditions are met, no structural alterations or other constructions should create a new non-compliance or increase the degree of non-compliance. The same number of parking spaces shall be provided for such conversions as are now required for new construction of similar buildings, such built parking spaces maybe, must be provided in accordance with the provisions of seventeen A three eighty-eight and said spaces may not be provided by a waiver pursuant to seventeen A three eighty-nine. The floor area ratio for the non-resident portion of the structure after the proposed conversion shall not exceed one and a half, one point five percent. And then the case of conversion to a joint occupancy building, at least twenty square feet of usable open space shall be provided for each habitable room. The rest of these really standards are not applicable to the this case, and then in general, the board should consider the criteria set forth in section seventeen A two oh eight for conditional use standards as follows, uses listed as a conditional use in a particular district may be permitted by the planning board or zoning board, or actually planning board, only after it is determined that's proposed development complies with the conditions and standards set forth elsewhere in this chapter for the location and operations of such use and with the following specifications and standards, A, that all proposed structures, equipment or materials should be readily accessible for fire and police protection, B, that the proposed use shall be of such location, size and character that in general it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed to be situated and will not significantly impact the environment in an environment in an adverse way and will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties in accordance with the zoning classification of said properties. And C, that in addition to the specifications and standards set forth in this section, in the case of conversion of a residential building exist in in existence on November nineteenth, nineteen sixty-eight, to a joint occupancy building or the conversion of a part of that residential portion to a joint occupancy building or office or other non-residential use, the following criteria shall be met, one, that the portion of the structure to be converted to a non-residential use shall be located above the remaining shall not be located above the remaining residential uses instead structure, if said residential use by the nature of its operation can be considered detrimental to the residential use, which is not an issue here and that no floor may be used for both residential and business uses unless a separate entrance hallway or stairway provides direct access to each use and that the non-residential use by the nature of its operation will not be detrimental to the residential use. The rest of it just calls for a site plan, which is why we're here today and we get to the variance section of this application, it's a D three variance in accordance with NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy D three. The proposed conditional use for the conversion of a residential portion of the joint occupancy building at sixteen Witherspoon to a non-residential use does not meet the use does not meet the condition specified in section seventeen A three oh seven B, that the same number of parking spaces shall be provided for such conversions as are now required for construction of similar buildings. Such parking shall be provided in accordance with the provisions of seventeen A three eighty eight and said spaces may not be satisfied by a waiver pursuant to section seventeen A three eighty nine. The conversion of the two dwelling units on the second floor, which equates to fifteen hundred and seventy square feet of eating and drinking required for parking spaces. The previous approval required three spaces. The applicant is providing four total parking spaces as two are being eliminated with the installation of that freezer. But D three variance can only be granted by the affirmative vote of at least five members. There's some bulk variances associated with the application. The installation of the walk-in freezer box increases the required building coverage in excess of the sixty percent requirement to sixty two. The side yard setback requirements twelve for the freezer and one is proposed. And then the parking section seventeen A three sixteen A. The addition of the conversion of the space requires a parking base variance and they're removing two spaces. That's kind of a synopsis of my memo. I'm going to just go over a couple stop comments. Under the floor plans relation of proposed structure to the environment, the floor plans provided with the applicant indicate a fifteen by seven foot walk-in freezer is proposed in the basement of sixteen Witherspoon. The applicant should advise, you know, the why the necessity for two walk-in freezers for the proposed restaurant use. And then we ask that the applicant address the sound levels of the freezer from ten PM to seven AM, which will be controlled to meet the standard set forth in NJ AC seven semicolon twenty nine. And then just the housekeeping matter on the signature block of sheet one of the site plans shall be revised to be reflect approved by the zoning board of adjustment as a minor site development. That's a brief synopsis of the application. I have with me tonight Dan Weissman, the municipal land use engineer, and I also have Justin. Let's go. The director of planning for the town. He's provided a memo to this case as well. But I thought you could ask them some questions. If not, we could go directly into the applicant's presentation. So I'm here for questions too. If you have any, be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. That's a mouthful. We want to make sure we all understand what we're doing. Do we have any questions for Derek or or Dan or Justin, I guess? Any questions? If not, let's go on into the presentation. Who's representing the applicant?
Gary Forshner representing the applicant twelve sixteen Witherspoon Holdings LLC. I have one other person. If you could admit him as a panelist, that's Carlos Rodriguez, our planner. Everyone else has already been admitted, I believe. Then the other thing I wanted to note, it appears that there are six eligible members to vote this evening. Am I correct in that? First of all?
Yes.
Okay, so the way I gather, there's one, obviously Steve Cohen had to recuse himself. And I gather there's one member of the board that's absent this evening. What I'd like to do with the board's permission is I'd like to proceed with the testimony, but have the right, if we feel that we need to, to carry this to a subsequent hearing, if necessary, to get a full compliment of the board, since it was noted. We need five affirmative vote for the conditional use variance. If that's acceptable, we'll proceed accordingly.
Mr. Forstner, just just to point out to you that in doing that, that would mean at the next meeting that you still need a full compliment and you would also need the absent member to listen to the tape of tonight's meeting.
Absolutely. All of that is understood.
Yeah, we can't guarantee that all members can be there at the next meeting. Usually everybody makes every effort to do that same thing with the member who was absent tonight. We can't promise.
And it would be our hope that we get sufficient feedback from the board this evening that we're comfortable going to a vote this evening. That would be the ideal scenario. So why don't we proceed accordingly? I'm going to summarize the application. Derek did a wonderful job in going through the application. We're just going to summarize this a little bit differently. So hopefully a little bit more clarity. This is twelve dash sixteen Witherspoon. It's essentially three buildings. There's only one building in question in this particular case. It's the building that was previously occupied on the first floor by Kilwens. We are looking to repurpose that building. So the first floor is vacant. And what we would like to do is put Shea Lee's in the first and some additional seating for Shea Lee's on the second floor of that building. But the the objective here is to repurpose and obviously put that building to productive reuse, which is consistent with the goals of trying to, you know, make Witherspoon and downtown Princeton as vibrant as as is reasonably possible. Was indicated, we do need a conditional use variance. I think the focus on that is with regard to two parking spaces. There's one clarification I need to make. The there's not two freezers that are being proposed. In the basement is a refrigerator. There's not enough space to put the freezer inside the building. So what we have done is we've proposed a standalone freezer in the rear of the building. The purpose of that freezer is to have a more efficient operation that requires fewer deliveries. So what's going to happen with the freezer is they're going to par bake or pre-bake, if you would. Some of the baked goods offsite at their location in Hamilton and they're going to bring that to this site and their most of that is and that's going to be loaded into the freezer. Some of the fresh products are going to be obviously in the refrigerator. So what it would allow to do is opposed to having daily or multiple trips. It has less frequent trips into the property in order to deliver the product and the product will be there and available to them in the freezer. Obviously, there's some internal renovations to this building. However, the external improvements are relatively minimal. The primary improvement is indicated is that we're proposing a standalone freezer to the exterior of the building. There was a comment made with regard to sound levels. We're not sure that there's an attenuation that's required, but if there is, we will do what we need to do in order to to attenuate or insulate the the sound from from that particular site. We do need a couple of bulk variances. One is a setback for one feet where ten feet is required. That again is for that freezer to put in the location where it's going to have the least impact. It does require us to eliminate the two parking spaces, which is the reason, primary reason for the conditional use variance. As you probably are well aware, Princeton had commissioned a parking study in downtown area and found that there's more than enough parking in downtown Princeton. But rather need to manage the parking a little bit differently and more efficiently. And it actually recommends that the parking requirements in the zone that is the subject of this application be reduced to the greatest extent possible. In other words, you know, have a more efficient use of parking in downtown Princeton so as to enhance the development, the vibrancy and the the use and have an efficient location for parking. So we we had previously gotten relief so that we would have the four parts, pardon me, six parking spaces that were there. We will, we are proposing to reduce it as necessary to provide for the freezer. So there'll be four parking spaces in the rear of the building with access off of Palmer Square. All of that is existing. We're just making that minor change. There's another bulk variance for building coverage, sixty two percent where sixty is permitted. That again is there's a small piece of that freezer that is on going to be located in an area that is currently not impervious. And then parking is technically a bulk variance, but I would argue that that's assumed in the conditional use variance. There've been a number of variants have been granted as indicated by Derek in two thousand seventeen. So what this application is about is about trying to repurpose a building, keep the vibrancy of the downtown, at least as relates to this building and have a good, well-known user be able to occupy this building and continue to be an asset to Princeton. With that, unless there's any questions or comments from the board, I will introduce our first witness.
I have one question. Is that public parking? Are those four spots public parking?
No, they're not. They're 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 hidden behind the building. You wouldn't even know that they were there. They're typically for employee parking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Forstner? Okay, you want to go ahead and have your folks sworn in?
If we can have Jeff Richter sworn in. Do you want to swear him all at once or do you want to do so?
No, we can do them all. So it's Cliff Horner, Jeffrey Richter and Pete Golden.
So Pete is not, Pete is a representative of the applicant. Pete may be available to answer questions. We don't anticipate him affirmatively testifying, but if you want to swear him in, just so you have that taken care of, that would be fine. So we have Cliff Horner, Carlos Rodriguez, Pete Golden and Jeff Richter.
Alrighty. And do all of you, I think you're muted, Mr. Golden. Do all of you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to introduce Jeff Richter. Jeff, if you would, please, first of all, state your name and spell it for the record.
That's Jeffrey Richter, R I C H T E R.
And if you can, please describe your educational and professional background.
Sure. Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Valparaiso University. Professional engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as a planner. Been a professional engineer for going on forty years. I've represented numerous boards throughout the state, provided testimony similar to this and in larger projects throughout the state of New Jersey.
We will accept you as an expert.
Thank you. Jeff, the plans that are subject to the application this evening were prepared by you or under your supervision?
That's correct.
If you would, I think probably now is a good time to show your your site plans. And then I'll ask you to go through that with the board in terms of what has been proposed.
Mr. Forstner, do you want to mark any of the plans that Mr. Richter is going to testify regarding as exhibits?
So we are going to show some of the plans that as exhibits. You tell me if you would like to. These, these are, Jeff, everything you're going to show at this point were part of the submissions with the application?
Yes, the site plan and the architect, I'll have the architectural plans.
I think, yeah, I think we would prefer to mark them as exhibits. So I don't know if you want to make them collective exhibits or how you'd like to describe.
Why don't we mark them as we as we present them? So it's clear to the board.
Okay.
We're not seeing it yet, Jeff.
Yeah, okay. A second here.
Sure.
Not used to doing this on a small screen. Did it come through yet?
No, not yet. We just have a black, there it is. Okay, please describe to us what we're looking at now and confirm that this is the plans that were submitted to the board as part of this application.
Yes, this is I zoomed in to the portion of the minor site plan, but this is the minor site plan that I prepared for the site. Sheet one of three last revised July eighteenth of twenty four. Okay, this is the site. Okay, so Derek's provided a between Derek and Gary.
Just for the record. Bear with me a second, Jeff. For the record, we'll mark this as A one.
That's fine.
Okay, if you can walk us through the plan.
And so Witherspoon is to the right here. The dark, the gray shaded areas are adjacent buildings to the site. This is twelve is right in here. Twelve Witherspoon. This is the twelve fourteen, rather. There's a little alleyway here. There's an alleyway here. This one's blocked off. And this is fourteen point five sixteen is here. And then this is sixteen Witherspoon. This is what the application is about tonight. Currently, there's the six parking spaces to the rear, one, two, three, four, up against the rear building. And there's two over in this area that face the this building here. This is the proposed freezer that we're proposing. I think it's twelve by sixteen, twelve foot by sixteen foot freezer and it leaves access through here, seven foot off, seven point four off the building to get into this alleyway, if you will, here that goes into a door to this building. There's existing stormwater underground here that was built as part of the prior project. We've also got back here. We've got dumpsters in this location, a trash compactor here that's loaded from the front. There's another dumpster over here. There's some stairways up to the dumpster here and there's a stairway to this adjacent building in this area here. This is the alleyway and there's an easement through here to get out to Palmer Square. And this is where people access this area currently. And there's HVAC equipment is in this area here. So as indicated, we aren't proposing any changes to the exterior of the building itself. And we're not proposing any signs. If we, any signage in the future, we would conform to the ordinance requirement or reappear before the board for a variance if needed. And just to clarify for the freezer, as Gary had indicated, the proposed external walk-in freezer in the parking lot here will be used for storage of pre-baked, partially baked goods. These frozen goods are pre-baked or partially baked offsite and delivered to the proposed bakery. There isn't sufficient room in the existing walk-in freezer inside the building. So that's what this freezer is going to use.
Clarification, Jeff, the the walk-in is or
Well, there's a right, there's a refrigerator in the building. The product stored in the exterior is stored in there until it's brought into the bakery where it's completed. The exterior freezer, as Gary had indicated, will reduce the need for multiple truck and van deliveries to the site, which currently is on a daily basis. They would anticipate with the new freezer to cut that down to two to three times a week. They would be able to you know, reduce the amount of trips to improve the circulation in the back parking lot and in the neighborhood here. The walk-in refrigerator in the basement will hold fresh product for use in furnishing, finishing pastries as well as sandwiches and salad production. Will also be used as staging area for pastry items that are that are in various stages of production. As Gary had indicated, will comply with
Jeff, you cut out there a little bit, at least on my end.
For the proposed walk-in freezer. Can you hear me? Is that better?
I can, I can hear you now. I don't know if it's just cutting out on my end, but but your your last sentence is too choppy.
Okay, so I'll go back. We'll comply with the relevant noise regulations for the walk-in freezer as Gary had indicated. There was a question about bicycle parking for the site. It's my understanding that the residents currently bring their bikes into their apartments. There are some bikes that are parked on on some of the U-shaped ollards, if you will. Now we we would propose to provide some parking along the rear of sixteen Witherspoon here. Might be able to put some of the U-type bicycle racks in here so you can park a bike on either side of the U. It's like an upside down U attached to the pavement.
Jeff, you're proposing that there be part bike racks on the site where you just indicated. Previously theoretically, they were supposed to put it in the basement, but that proved to be impractical. So when this occupant purchased it and is brought to our attention, posing the bike racks to the exterior of the building in a location that you think is suitable for that purpose?
Correct. That's the only area in the back there that that actually there's, it's actually a little wider there and there would be room, enough room to get the bikes into that area. Okay. The fire marshal had just one comment concerning a door to make opening outwards. We would comply with that recommendation. The proposed structure, the equipment and materials will be readily accessible for fire and police protection. It's noted the fire official did not express any access concerns in his review memo. And it's basically remaining unchanged from the existing, from the condition that it currently exists. As I indicated, there is a stormwater system in the back parking lot underground. Stormwater runoff from the proposed walk-in freezer will be directed to the existing onsite stormwater management facilities. The freezer is being placed predominantly over existing The freezer is being placed predominantly over existing impervious surface. The freezer will add approximately sixty square feet of additional impervious surface, which will not significantly impact existing stormwater management facilities. Then the there was a comment to investigate possibly relocating the trash compactor. As you can see from the site, or if you've been to the site, it's very tight back there. And the compactor was actually relocated at one time in the past to provide better access for the collection vehicles. So it doesn't, it's, plus there's stairs to the adjacent building in that area, so it's not really practical to move it further out into the driveway or closer to the building. So we would prefer to just leave it in the location that it is, because it's currently working and feel that that's the best location for it at this point. And as Derek had indicated, we would provide the corrected signature blocks on line one as requested by Mr. Weissman. And I think the variances have been spelled out several times, so I'm not sure I need to go over that again.
Okay, and we'll have Carlos obviously to address the variance further as part of his testimony.
Correct.
I have nothing further of Mr. Richter at this time, obviously subject to any questions from the board or the public. If not, I'll introduce our next witness.
Any questions?
Do you think you'll be able to design covered bike parking?
I, I think the practical answer to that is we're not proposing covered bike parking. It would add to the FAR. But we think that the location immediately adjacent to the building is suitable for that purpose. Again, it's a very tight site in the rear of it. You know, what, what, apparently what they testified to historically is they would do in the basement. But is our people will tell you it's just impractical. People aren't using it because it is impractical to, for them to park bikes in the basement. Otherwise, we would do so. So we're proposing just some, some open bike racks in the rear of the building in that location.
Any other questions? Hey, Gary, you want to keep going?
Steve?
Yes, I do. Excuse me, Justin Lesko has his hand raised. Sorry to interrupt.
No, not a problem.
And Karen, I think you'll need to swear me in first.
I do. Mr. Lesko, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry to cut in, but I just wanted to follow up with the clarification. Mr. Forster said theoretically there had to be covered bike parking in the basement. But that actually was a condition of the seventeen approval, you know, condition C says covered bicycle parking shall be provided to the rear of the buildings or in the basement. So I just want the board to be aware that that shall.
And that's, and that's, and that's a good point, because technically, I guess what we're doing is asking the board to modify that condition. Because although, you know, what, what, the way they provided, or at least the way we understood that they were providing it in the past by saying they'd be parked in the basement. But either there's no space or you have space that's not easily accessible through the building, through a, what are those doors? Bilco doors or the like. And, and so rather than tell you that they'll park in the basement, which we don't think is ever realistically going to happen, we're just providing the, the above ground. So I guess to your point, Justin, we're technically asking the board to modify that condition.
Yep, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why I asked it?
Yep, thank you. If there's no further questions, I'll introduce our next witness, Cliff Horner.
Good evening.
Cliff, if you would please describe your educational and professional background?
I'm a graduate of NGIT, Bachelor of Architecture. I've been licensed twenty-five years.
We'll accept you, we'll accept you as an expert.
Okay. Jeff, can you put up his plans?
Yes.
And then Cliff, I'll ask you to.
Mr. Horner, you're the project of the Architective Record, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So while you're doing this, and I'll ask Cliff to identify it, but A2 will be the architectural plans?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, where to go? So as Jeff's bringing that up, as he mentioned, there'll be no changes to the exterior. The front doors will remain the same into the commercial space and into the residential units above. But we're going to completely renovate the first floor. There'll be new display cases, small amount of seating at the front. A new kitchen area in the back and dishwashing. But the main change to the floor plan is going to be adding a stair to the access to second floor and to access the new basement, which will be dug out. You able to get those up, Chuck?
Yeah. I was just having a hard time getting it to come up on the screen.
It looks like it's loading.
It's loading. There you go. Come through yet?
Not yet. Technology is wonderful when it works.
I had it open, but when I went to the screen, it wasn't on the open things. It's these are with two screens, you can move stuff around.
We're still seeing a black screen.
That's interesting. It says it's sharing. It's got the green box around it.
Nope. It does say we're viewing your screen, but there's no, there's no plan up there.
No.
Okay.
Jeff, if this keeps up, you're going to have to lose your title as the technological wizard.
I'm not the technological wizard. All right, let me.
When you stop sharing it and try to do it.
Try it again. Yeah, if it would just come up on my screen. Oh, there it is. Share.
Still not showing.
It's a black screen?
Yeah, it looked like it, it looked like it was about to. You could see the message that you were sharing your screen, and then it went to black.
Yeah, why did it do that? Yeah, because I have the green outline around, around it.
I may try to do mine, Jeff.
Let me stop. You want to try?
Well, let me, let me load mine first. I, I didn't have it set up to, to, to be shared, so.
That won't work time.
You can see your cursor moving.
That's interesting. It says you're sharing, it says you are sharing.
Okay. I'm gonna, I, I have it up now. Let me see if I can share it. Hey, now are you guys seeing a plan?
Yes.
Good.
First of all, Cliff, if you can identify these plans?
The first plan is just a key plan, just shown the three properties.
These are the, first of all, it's the, the plan set where was that which was submitted to the board as part of the application?
Correct.
And it consists of how many pages?
Three.
And so we'll mark that collectively, if that's all right with you, Karen, we'll mark that as A3.
A3 or A2?
Oh, I'm sorry, A2, you're right.
Okay.
I'm going to go down because I assume you want to testify from this plan, Cliff?
Yes.
Okay.
So this plan shows the existing conditions. The plan to the left is the second floor with the two apartments. Plan in the center is the first floor, which was the Kilwin space. And the plan on the right is the existing basement, which is very low at this point. So if you can go to the next plan. So this plan, we'll start with the plan in the center. Again, the, from the outside, it'll say the same. The entrance doors will remain. The, the area to the right in the center is the display cases and a point of service. Right behind that is the new stair to access the second floor. And the basement, out at the front, along the windows, be a small amount of seating. The back left-hand side will be a new ADA bathroom. And then behind the stairs is a new kitchen and a new dishwashing area. When you go up the stairs, there'll be two types of seating. There'll be general seating in the front. And in the back will be for small groups like birthday parties, office parties, that those type of things. There'll be two new bathrooms on the second floor and a staff servant station. And at the back is a new egress door that used to go to the fire escape. It'll still go to the fire escape, but it, rather than a window, we're going to put it a door. And we'll do the swinging the door out and up against the building as the fire marshal had mentioned. Going to the plan on the right, when you go down the stairs into the basement, we're going to excavate that down enough to get the larger walk-in refrigerator for the fresh products. And then right next to it is a prep kitchen. The space in the rear will stay the same. That's mechanical. And a stair up through a Bilco in the floor of the first floor.
Okay. So that, so the major change here is the second floor is going to be converted from residential to commercial, correct?
Correct.
And be used in conjunction with Shea East, which is going to be on the first floor?
Correct.
Okay. I think that was it. Was there anything? I think that really was all you had. Are there any questions or comments from the board? If there are none, nope, go ahead.
All right, keep going.
Okay, I'd like now to call Carlos Rodriguez.
He's already, he's already been sworn in.
Yep. Carlos, if you would, please describe your educational and professional background?
Can you make me a little bigger?
Oh, hold on, let me stop sharing my screen unless you need one of these pictures.
I, I don't.
Okay, there you go. Hopefully you're seeing now. There we go.
That way people can actually see me.
Machu Picchu in the back?
I'm sorry?
Is that Machu Picchu in the back?
No, Teotihuacan.
Okay.
Different pyramid.
Gotcha. Carlos, if you would, please describe your educational and professional background?
Sure. So I have a master's in city and regional planning from the Blaustein School at Rutgers, where I also taught for many years. I've been a licensed professional planner in New Jersey for over thirty-five years. I'm a past president of the American Planning Association New Jersey Chapter and a member of the College of Fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners and the editor of the two thousand and eighteen edition of The Complete Guide to Planning in New Jersey. I think we can accept you as a expert. Thank you.
Carlos, you've had the opportunity to review the application submitted in support of this application?
I have.
And the plans that have been submitted to the board and discussed this evening?
I have.
You've had an opportunity to review the relevant portions of the ordinance and the master plan?
I have.
And you've heard the testimony here this evening?
I have.
With that, if you would, please walk us through the variances that are being proposed and the justification for relief.
Okay, so as was mentioned earlier, the application requires a D3 conditional use variance to allow the conversion of the residential use to a non-residential use, the second floor of the proposed bakery, while reducing the number of onsite parking spaces from six to four. It is the number, it's the reduction in the parking spaces from six to four that triggers the need for the, for the C3 variance, not the use itself. And then there are some, as was discussed, some additional C or bulk variances, some which were grandfathered by the planning board back in two thousand and seventeen, and some of which are new. Now, as I'm sure you're well aware, use variances according to the municipal land use law shall be granted only in particular cases and for special reasons without causing substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. But conditional use variances are different from other D variances. There is case law that has definitively established that all D variances are not cut from the same cloth, nor do they require the same proofs, including the enhanced proofs first established in the Medici case, which were subsequently codified into the law. In a case known as Coventry Square, the court held that the positive criteria in a conditional use variance is established if the applicant can demonstrate that the site continues to be an appropriate site for the conditional use, notwithstanding the deviations from one or more conditions imposed by the ordinance. And in a subsequent case known as the TSI East Brunswick, the New Jersey Supreme Court reaffirmed the Coventry Square doctrine and confirmed that the enhanced burden of proof does not apply to conditional use variances. So in light of this, I would argue that the provisions in the former borough zoning code that govern conditional uses are in fact largely obsolete and don't reflect this jurisprudence. The recently adopted master plan, which I'll talk about later, pointedly considers the entire zoning code for the downtown, including its conditional use provisions, to be largely obsolete. Okay, so the the question then is, does the site continue to be an appropriate site for the conditional use? The three buildings in question are located in the heart of the CB district or Central Business District. We're mixed, and by district, I mean both zoning district and, and CBD in the conventional sense. Where mixed-use buildings such as proposed are both permitted and encouraged. And the town's new master plan is quite explicit in this regard. The three buildings in question, and we're only talking about modifications to one, but they really come as a package, are part of a closely, a close-knit and highly valued historic. are part of a closely, a close-knit and highly valued historic urban fabric that actually predates the adoption of any zoning. And so as such, I would argue that the site continues to be appropriate for the proposed uses. In addition, and specifically with respect to the parking issue, the town commissioned in 2017 a rather extensive parking study of the downtown and surrounding areas. And, um, Gary's already stolen some of my thunder on this, but.
Well, when you have good stuff, Carlos, I'm, I'm likely to take it. So yeah, no problem.
So, um, the study was prepared by a firm called Nelson Nygaard, which is a well-respected national parking consulting firm. And it concluded that downtown Princeton does not have a parking problem. It has a parking management problem. Specifically, that study comments that parking issues often hinder development plans that might otherwise further enhance a town's vibrant urban center. One of the primary purposes of this study, therefore, is to identify opportunities to remove parking requirements as a barrier to desirable forms of development and investment. The parking study found that within its study area, there were 1,633 on-street parking spaces and 5,392 off-street parking spaces for a grand total of 7,025 parking spaces. The study goes on to state that aggregate demands and supply measures based on an extensive set of field surveys reveal consistently high levels of excess capacity, excess capacity, even during times of peak parking demand. Now, the parking study under, in the section under recommendations, urges the town to update the zoning code to reduce barriers to wanted forms of investment while helping to make parking resources more flexible and resilient to change. And there were a whole series of of recommendations, which I won't go into, as to how the town could get more mileage out of the existing uh, inventory of parking, what they call the management side of parking. Now, while it is not the jurisdiction of the zoning board to amend the zoning to implement this recommendation, granting the required variance will be entirely consistent with the recommendations of this study. So if you agree with me, and this is an open question that I put to you, if you agree with me that the application presumptively satisfies the positive criteria for the reasons that I stated, I will move on to address the negative criteria. And if not, I can provide a recitation of the usual purposes from the municipal land use law to justify the D3 variance.
For the record, Carlos, can you just mention those briefly?
Sure. Let's see. I'd start with purpose A, which is where everybody starts. To guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I'm not sure we're promoting the morals here, but we're promoting the general welfare. Um, purpose C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. I think this project does exactly that. Purpose E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions. This project is going to help revitalize, further revitalize a, a section of Witherspoon Street and fill an empty storefront. Purpose J, to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts. So this is a historic district. These are historic buildings. And they're going to be, the interior of them, at least that one target building, is going to be substantially improved. The basement, which I understand is, has a very low ceiling and a dirt floor is going to be substantially improved. And the, um, the, the second floor space is going to be substantially improved.
But in sum and substance, Carlos, this is going to be able to, uh, repurpose the, uh, the building that's now vacant and put into, uh, productive reuse, correct?
That's correct. I think that's probably enough on the, on the,
Mm-hmm.
On the municipal land use law, don't you agree?
Uh, I'm good as long as the board has no further questions or, or, or items that we should discuss in that regard.
So then, um, addressing the negative criteria, let's start with the master plan. Now, the 2023 Master Plan and Reexamination Report contains a series of principles and recommendations that are pertinent to the case at hand. Under land use goal number four, the master plan urges the town to provide greater opportunities for economic development by expanding permitted uses within the downtown, commercial and mixed-use districts that reflect the future direction of the market. Under mobility, goal number sixteen, the master plan urges the town to optimize the usage of existing parking capacity, particularly in the downtown. Under the land use plan, goal number fourteen, the master plan urges the town to reduce off-street parking requirements to the greatest extent possible. The master plan also urges the town to reduce or eliminate minimum open space requirements to allow for buildings similar to existing ones and to reduce minimum yard requirements. So that provision that required twenty square feet of open space for every residential unit, which was, uh, waived back in 2017, that's what they're referring to here. And under mobility.
And just to be clear, Carlos, in fact, we're reducing the requirement for the open space, um, based upon the reduction of the residential units, correct?
That's also true. That's also true. And under mobility, goal number forty-six, the master plan urges the town to amend the zoning code to minimize or remove minimum parking requirements and establish maximum parking requirements, maximum parking requirements. In other, in other words, the master plan is urging the town to do away with selected aspects of what is essentially an obsolete zoning framework that, if strictly implemented, would cause serious damage to the downtown and other areas and would have all sorts of undesirable impacts on the fabric of the community. Just to drive home this point, I would remind the board that if the current parking requirements were strictly applied to these three properties and their uses, they would require thirty off-street parking spaces, which would in turn require the demolition of at least one of these historic buildings. And no one wants to see that happen.
And Carlos, just to, for belts and suspenders there, the board previously granted, um, variance relief for the number of parking spaces. We're only changing that by two.
The, the.
Well, that, that was, just, just interrupt. That was the planning board, correct, Gary?
That, yes, that's correct. That would have been the planning board.
Okay.
That, that is, that was the planning board, exactly. Now, um, with respect to the, still on the negative criteria, with respect to substantial detriment to the zoning plan, I, I cannot argue that granting this conditional use variance will not in some very small way undermine the integrity of certain provisions of the current zoning ordinance, or at the very least not implement or effectuate those provisions. But as I just mentioned, that is precisely what the new master plan is calling for. And until such a time as the zoning code is amended, it falls on this board to provide applicants with the needed relief to prevent unwanted outcomes that would themselves undermine the intent of the master plan. The master plan has directly challenged the validity of certain aspects of the current zoning code. And so I would argue that this proof in this specific comment, in this specific context, is not really valid. And then finally, no substantial detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. The application will repurpose an existing vacant space and put it towards a productive use. It will bring a high-quality business to that location and further animate Witherspoon Street. The deliveries, which we already talked about, to both the existing businesses in the other two buildings and the new business in the building in question will continue to take place from the rear of the property without disturbing the pedestrian-oriented streetscape along the front. The proposed walk-in freezer and the other cooling equipment will reduce, as also mentioned, the frequency of deliveries and therefore reduce the presence of delivery trucks in the area while optimizing business operations. The increase in coverage from sixty percent to sixty-two percent, which is inevitable, uh, if the freezer is to be installed, I would characterize as trivial and well justified by the, by the benefits derived from the addition of the freezer. So in my opinion, this application satisfies all the required proofs and I believe it should be approved. Gary?
I think, I think you've covered the bases. Um, subject to any questions or comments from the board, um, I, I, I think we've addressed the various comments that are in the reports from the board's professionals, but if there's anything else that you would like us to go through in that regard, I'm more than happy to do so. Um, but otherwise, I think we're pretty much done. And obviously you're going to open it to the public as well.
Right. We have a couple of questions. Uh, Eve, Eve, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, right now, how many car parking spots are there? You probably said this already, but just, I see that there are four expected, correct?
There are six spaces.
So there, and in the future, you will, they have four.
That's right.
And who parks in those spaces now? That's not, that's not customers, that's residents and/or employees, whoever gets there first?
I, I'm, I'm not the one to answer, but I'm.
I can jump in. It's, it's allocated to the employees, to the managers of the commercial businesses in the, the buildings there.
And.
Just, just, could I just interrupt you for a second? Pete, just to be clear, since we haven't had you testify, can you just tell us your relationship to the applicant?
Um, I am, uh, on behalf of the applicant 1216, uh, Witherspoon. Um, my role is vice president and director of operations for Shuru, which is a sister company um, to 1216 Witherspoon and also Genesis Hospitality, which will be the operator at 16 Witherspoon on the first floor. Uh, I oversee the, the maintenance and construction of, of everything that we handle, uh, for our businesses. Um, I, I work hand in hand with the owner and I work hand in hand with our hospitality team. Um, and we're, we've been working with the architect and engineers, um, to come up with the, the concept here to relocate our bakery into this location at 16 Witherspoon, uh, which is a vacant space that we have now.
So just now, just to be responsive, um, um, and, and make clear, how are those spaces going to be used?
So the parking spaces, there's, uh, one allocated to Small World Cafe. There's one allocated earlys, which is in fourteen Witherspoon, Small World Cafes and twelve Witherspoon. There'll be one allocated towards, uh, the sixteen Witherspoon, uh, retail location. And then there's one allocated towards, uh, eighty-eighty-four Nassau, which we share the alley with. And they're, they're for the management or employees to use.
So everyone who'll be using those parking spaces will be familiar with the rear of the building and how to access those parking spaces?
This, this is a practical matter. It doesn't seem like you are going to need less spaces, but, um, it's just an observation on my part.
Well, I think, I, I think it's fair to say that the applicant will require fewer parking spaces, but A, it allows us to, to put the building to productive reuse in a, in an operation that works well for this particular site, but also as, um, Carlos had testified to extensively, um, the intent of both that study and the master plan wants to rely upon and make better use of the extensive, um, parking opportunities in downtown Princeton, having more than enough uh, as opposed to, um, um, you know, in the rear of the buildings that are not, yeah, immediately accessible, uh, or, or easily accessible.
It strikes me that that study was done eight years ago and then a lot has changed on Witherspoon in terms of density of, of, um, business there.
Understood. Are there other, are there other questions?
Uh, Michael?
Yeah, um, I think I, I want to direct the question to Derek, if I could, um, Carlos Rodriguez mentioned that if the in-place zoning, and I'm, I understand it already has the approved six-use parking, but if the, 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 the code, um, prior to the planning board action, the computation would be thirty parking spaces. Is that computed on both square footage on the retail and how's that computed?
Uh, let me, I have to go back to the old memo, uh, from that case, but it, it was twenty or thirty spaces was based on the various uses in there. Um.
Jeff, can you go through that and help us on it?
Yeah, there's a calculation on, on the site plan. It's based on, as Derek said, it's based on the uses, the residential uses and then the commercial uses, um, based on the ordinance requirements.
Now, I guess what I'm looking at is the second floor plans. They're, they're going to be forty seating capacity for forty-eight people?
Jeff, can you address that?
And then, and, yeah, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we already got, you got approval from the planning board to only have six parking spaces from a possible thirty. And now your presentation is reducing it from that meager six to four. Just to prove that. Like, yeah. That's, that's not a question, just statement. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm looking at this right.
Well, you're certainly looking at it correctly, that there's a reduction in the parking spaces, but again, um, based upon the study and based upon the master plan, uh, there's more than enough parking spaces and the recommendation was to reduce the onsite parking requirements, uh, to the greatest extent possible.
But the master plan intent has been complied with when it was reduced from thirty to six. I think a few, a further argument again for that is not plausible.
Uh, Michael, if I could jump in real quick, I, I don't believe in that 2017 approval that there was a variance request to go from the thirty to the six. So I'm not sure if Mr. Rodriguez was saying, you know, if this site was built today, uh, it would require thirty, which would essentially be, you know, half or, or most of the site, uh, as you might see somewhere else. I might could be wrong about that, but I don't believe it's, uh, they came in and asked for essentially twenty-four space reduction a few years ago and are asking for more now. Um.
I, I think, I think to your point, Justin, it was a pre-existing non-conforming.
Yes.
Um, as would almost everything in downtown Princeton be. And so we're only asking for relief from two parking spaces in that regard.
Yep. And in 2017, And in twenty seventeen, there was no relief from the parking requirement because of that pre-existing non-conforming is my understanding.
But Justin, looking through the resolution, there's no, it doesn't address that as far as I can see, correct?
Exactly, and that's why it's my, you know, based on that, I imagine it was considered a pre-existing non-conforming.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? George?
Yeah, there's a, a question, I guess, to Ms. Casey. The argument that was put forth by Mr. Rodriguez that if the new plan recommends changes in the zoning ordinance that haven't yet happened, that that should nevertheless be mitigate any negative considerations when somebody applies for variance. As a general principle, I'd like your comment on that.
And what the municipal land, the municipal land use law requires as a standard is that for any variance, right? We've got the positive criteria and the negative. Negative criteria means that there would be no substantial detriment to both the zoning plan, the zoning ordinances, master plan, as well as no substantial detriment to the surrounding neighborhood or the public good. So I believe what the applicant is arguing is that based on the new updated master plan. This variance for parking would be consistent with the master plan. It would not be detrimental in terms of what the master plan is recommending. Now, the other aspects of the substantial detriment would be, is it detrimental quote to the public good? It's reducing parking. The applicant is saying, well, that's not public parking. That's parking for, I guess, the management of different businesses all directly adjacent there. So they're saying it, it's not affecting public parking because it's not allowed for public parking. I don't know if in the previous planning board approval, again, I don't think there was any reference what that parking was going to be used for. There just isn't any discussion about the parking. Well, no, wait a minute, hold on a minute. Actually, in the prior approval, it's their finding fourteen, the planning board. Okay, the planning board concluded that with the need for parking spaces in the downtown area, the number of spaces on the site should be maximized. So the board required that the size of stalls be reduced so as to improve maneuverability. So I, I think that's the only discussion in the original or, or the, the approval from the planning board that talks about parking. So I don't know if that addressed your question.
Jeff, could you, in, in light of that, that comment, can you show us the parking configuration now and the potential conflicts with the, the vehicles that we're, we're removing?
On the site plan?
Yeah.
If it works.
It's a part of your plan set?
Yeah, the plan should, shows the six parking spots and the, in the freezer boxes over the two at the end. So the functioning of the four spaces is the same as it is today. The two at the end you just pulled straight into and those will be eliminated by the freezer box.
Yeah, the plan I'm looking at doesn't show the six, but I thought there was a potential conflict between pulling out of those two parking spaces and, and, and the four that remain so that it would impact. It, it would improve, improve maneuverability. Much has been indicated in the prior resolution. Jeff, I don't know if you think your screen is being shared, but again, we got a black screen.
It's, it's something not working. It worked before. I can't bring it up, but yeah, the four spots are angled up against the building to the rear and the other two are straight in. There's no, the box isn't going to impact maneuverability of those four spots because it's beyond the angle of those parking spaces.
Gary, just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Prior resolution from the planning board. Okay. It, it finds there'll be sufficient room to maneuver vehicles, particularly with reduction of the size of the stalls and the persons who will use the parking area will be residents and employees familiar with it. I don't know then if the planning board believed that people, that, that people living in the apartments were going to use the parking spaces. Do they have parking that's provided with their, with their unit?
So the way I read that is it could be, you know, either the, the residents or, or the employees, but Pete, had, are there any parking spaces that are designated for residents? I would imagine not.
No, there is not. Most of the residents are college students and they have bicycles and walk to classes.
Or skateboards.
Or skateboards.
Booters. Okay, any other questions? At this point, yes, Donna.
Yeah, real quick, you told us what the four remaining spots would be used for. Who's losing the two spots? Whose spots were they, were those?
Right now, there's two spots that are allocated towards our eighty, we own eighty-eighty-four Nassau Street, which is on the other side of the alley. So we had two spots that were allocated to that, so we kind of share, our managers kind of share those spots. So it would be one, it'd be, those would be our spots. We'd still have one for Arlie's. We'd still have for Small World Cafe. We'd have one for the manager at the bakery at sixteen and then there'd still be an additional spot for the people at eighty-eighty-four Nassau, the manager of that location.
Got it.
Other questions?
Yeah, I, I do. When I look at this plan, it, it looks like even those existing angled spots as are shown now, the maneuverability would be tough. Is this actually functioning as a, a, a fully utilized lot right now? It, it appears very tight, but does it, does it work as it is?
It, it, it works presently as it is. It's been that way for, we took ownership in twenty twenty-one and I think it's been that way prior to that. It is tight. We do have, you know, it's, it's kind of a back of a house, so we've got the dumpsters and the, the trash compactor. But, you know, it does work, you know, we do have to maneuver in and out. You know, if someone's got a car block, if they're making a delivery and someone needs to leave, you know, it, it's been working. We work with the people to make sure that, you know, it's functional and people can get in and out.
Okay, and then this freezer, it comes in, it's, it's, it's a single unit that gets, can pull into this around, you know, these existing buildings and whatever vehicle it comes in.
Yeah, so the freezer box will be set, you know, we're going to put a pad in where the part, two parking spaces are, that's what we're proposing. And there would be a, like a, an entry door, a man door that the deliveries could go from the parking lot, they could wheel it right into the freezer. And then our, the staff at sixteen Witherspoon can take the product out of the freezer and then go in the back alley and bring it to the store when they need it for that day or for that morning.
So Jeff, the vehicles that, that are going to do deliveries of a site, particularly for the freezer, are going to be vans and small box trucks?
That's correct.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
And, and they, they deliver back there now, so.
And the freezer itself, when that gets brought in, that all, all that's going to fit through the space available?
Yeah, they're just going to have to be careful.
It, it comes in components, comes in panels.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Bernice? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Justin.
Who's that? Oh.
Thank you, and this is for Mr. Richter. You mentioned earlier that you could place those U racks for bicycle parking along the rear of the building. Do you have any idea either, you know, realistically or ballpark of how many you might be able to fit?
We might be able to fit, I looked today, maybe two or two, definitely two, but possibly three, which could provide four to six parking spots for bikes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Anything else? For now.
There's nothing else that I have. I don't know if there's any more, more board members.
More, Gary. Go ahead, Donna.
A question about the freezer, the decibel levels. It, it looks like they're not meeting the requirements. How do you get the decibel level down or do you?
Well, there, there's actually two, two possibilities in that regard. One is there's, 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 there's background noise in, in that area and it's very possible that that's not going to add any noise, any appreciable noise. It's also to, to residential properties and the only residential properties in close proximity is the actual residents on this site, but there, there are ways to put in noise attenuating screening or insulation that would achieve that objective. So how we're going to do it will remain to be seen, but we'll make sure that it fully complies.
And it runs twenty-four seven, obviously.
Well, it's like any other freezer, turns on, turns off, you know, periodically depending, you know, as the temperature lowers. So obviously it's going to be on more in the summer than it is going to be in the winter, for instance.
Got it.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, Gary, you want to proceed or are you done?
Uh, we're done as far as the testimony goes. You know, what I'd really love to do at this point, well, I, I guess you've got to open it up to the public before we proceed in any, any other regard.
We do. You can do a summary statement if you want to at this point.
Could I, could I withhold that because I want to see, you know, and perhaps get some feedback from the board, as you know, you know, there's only six eligible members to vote and we may wish to hold it over to the next meeting. So, you know, if you open it to the public and maybe we get some feedback from the board before my final statement, then, then we can decide how best to proceed.
Okay, thank you. We will now open it for public comment. If anybody in the public still with us who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Claudia, do you see anyone?
No, no one.
We only have one person left. Public, so. Okay, we'll close the public comment section. We go back to you, Gary, now. It's still withhold. I, we can't take a straw vote, so I'm not exactly sure.
Can't take a straw vote, but you can ask the board for their comments and, you know, so we get a sense of whether or not, you know, it makes sense to hold it over.
Uh, so we will now go into executive session. Any comments or motions to proceed? I'll make a, I'll make, I'll tell you how I feel. I, the parking doesn't particularly bother me because I think it's that's not much anyhow. But the thing that I find concerning that hasn't been brought up is in a town that we are fighting like crazy to find affordable housing, for some reason, willing to take out at least two minutes. And, and I guess that as the planning board doesn't care about that and I, I guess we don't either. At least it just seems to me that it's a curiosity that we're willing to do that so readily. I'm, I am disposed to approve this plan. I don't think you can make an argument to those of us who live in Princeton that have too much parking. I just don't think it's, I don't think we would ever buy that argument, but I, I do understand what you're saying and I understand what studies say, but we come to anyhow, so I'm, I'm disposed to. Other comments?
The freezer is to me just huge. And, and I'm just wondering if anyone has any kind of perspective on this. Is, is this a normal item that is placed in a parking lot? Is?
So I, what I will say to you, it's not unusual to place a, a freezer in a parking lot. Obviously, when you have, you know, tight sites and you're trying to, you know, put properties into productive reuse, you've got to maximize use this space that you have. So there are other sites that, that do exist that do have, you know, facilities that are outside. That's the way, the only way we can make this site operate well and function the way it's intended and, and so that's why we proposed it that way. We've certainly looked at all the different possibilities, including putting in the basement, just not enough room for it in the basement to, to, to accommodate this. As far as the freezer goes, I'll, I'll defer to Pete. Probably you're the best one, but I would imagine this is, you know, pretty comparable to a typical walk-in freezer. So we're not doing anything exceptional in that regard. Pete is, can you provide some, you know, some elucidate that in any way?
Yeah, so currently, you know, we own, we own and operate Shayle East Princeton on five Palmer Square East or West and we don't own that facility. We, we have walk-in boxes in the basement that are about two hundred feet away in the basement and we have to make at least two deliveries a day, maybe three deliveries a day to that location to be able to stock that store to keep up with the, the volume that that store does. So that's the, here at this location, there's no room in the basement where Shayle East, they have a network of tunnels underneath their space to be able to put a walk-in box. At this location, we just don't have the space, so that's why we're proposing to put the walk-in box, the freezer outside so that our delivery guy can reduce the amount of trips. They can bring up product and then as the store has a need, they'll take it to the inside and heat it up and warm it up for that, for that morning. Instead of having our delivery guys make three trips a day to Princeton to restock the, the shelves, we just felt that this was, you know, less traffic in the area and a more effective use for the operation.
And if you can't put the freezer in that location, what happens to this use?
I, I don't think we could put the bakery in this location. We couldn't, we couldn't operate without the freezer. We need a, we need a walk-in freezer that holds a lot of product.
How big are the freezers now in, in Shayle's?
The ones in Princeton, it's an eight by sixteen.
How about the one in the Lambeville store?
Uh, Lambeville store has two that we fit inside the space because again, we're landlocked there, there's no parking behind us and that's, they're both eight by eight, so there's a, they're basically eight by sixteen there as well.
So you're thinking the four extra feet gives you what you need for less delivery trucks?
Yeah, I mean, plus the, the, the spaces, you know, the parking spaces are only so wide. So, you know, if we could shorten up, we could shorten up the walk-in freezer a little bit, but we're not, we're still going to lose two parking spaces as it's proposed. There wouldn't be enough space to get a single car back there.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just questioning whether or not, so basically you're talking about four extra feet. And so my question is, does that get you to where there's less deliveries?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we're hoping to do it once a day. We're, we'd really love to get it down, so it's only maybe two or three times a week, but at least, you know, once a day for the frozen goods.
As opposed to several trips a day.
Yeah, we've got, we've got three delivery vans that, that, so our product, the majority of our products made in Hamilton, we have three delivery vans that, that circle throughout the day. So we're trying to limit and reduce the, the amount of vehicles that we send into downtown Princeton to restock the store and keep product in the store. It gets really hard at the holidays and special events to keep product in the store. I'm not sure. Um, it gets really hard at the holidays and special events to keep product in the store. I'm not sure if anyone on the board has been to our location in Princeton, but, you know, it's a small location. Um, and it seems like it's pretty popular and people like to frequent it, and it's hard to keep product there because we just don't have the space to replenish it as quickly as we need.
Are you gonna keep that other space?
Un-unfortunately, we don't own the location, um, the other locations. So that's what we're proposing to relocate that over to this location. Um, and add a, add our bread store to it as well. So it'll be a combined location similar to what we have in Shay Lee's Lambertville. Uh, it'll be that concept is what we're proposing.
Donna?
Yeah, that was my question. So the other store will go, won't be here.
No, it, yeah, it's, we're, our lease is up next spring. Um, so that's why we're trying to get the approvals to get, you know, get going so before the lease expires and we don't have Shay Lee's in Princeton.
Other questions?
Derek, Derek or anybody from the town, do we have any problem with them running outdoor electrical equipment to plug into the freezer?
No, I mean, they'd have to follow the building code. Um, and you had asked earlier about if there are any similar situations in town there. I think back in the nineties, before my time here, uh, Jack Morrison got a variance to put a walk-in refrigerator behind the Blue Point Grill on Pine Street. So that's another area where tight space and, uh, you know, I'm sure they have to run the electric line and conduits and all that stuff, but it'll be done according to code.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're uncommon, Donna.
They're not.
Thanks.
Other questions, other comments, other?
Um, yeah, my comment would be that I I can support this as well. I think as much as, uh, the town is looking to, um, have affordable housing, I I think we're also needing to, um, promote, uh, attract businesses, um, to exactly, uh, that part of town and, uh, vacant spaces is, um, a detriment. Um, so I think overall, uh, I, you know, su- support this despite the, the loss of the two parking spaces and, and the, uh,
And if it's any consolation, there's actually another location in town where we are, in fact, proposing affordable housing, additional housing as well as some affordable housing, and we're trying to pursue that as well. Um, and and so, you know, perhaps that that gives you a little more of a comfort level. Um, we're obviously trying to repurpose different buildings that that to make them make sense and work for not only the the owner of the property, but for the the town as well.
Thanks, Bernice. Uh, Eve?
Uh, I just want to say a little bit more about why I brought up the parking, um, question, and I'm, I'm going to talk fast because my battery is on nine, so I might have to disappear as soon as I make my comments and come back. But, um, I, the I just, I don't, I guess this is not really zoning as purview, but I do see a difference between whether or not there's a need for more parking when it has to do with people who are coming into town, people who are shopping and employees. And it doesn't sound like any, I don't know how many employees there will, there will be, but it sounds like all of them will have to either walk some distance to wherever their car is or maybe use a bike that's been snowed on at times or rained on at times, because it doesn't seem like there's any, there's no, there's no provision for that kind of parking, and that's probably a humanitarian issue, not a zoning issue, but it's just, it's why I brought that, it's largely why I brought that up.
Thank you. Any other comments? And do you want to propose a motion?
Well, I think that under the circumstances, and tell me, Pete, if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, I think we want to, you know, hold this over to the next meeting, make sure we, or at least hope to have a full complement of the board and ask the the one member that's absent to, what, to read the, uh, the transcript, uh, or not the transcript, listen to the audio. Um, and perhaps hold that. Pete, that make sense to you?
Yeah, that that'll work for me. We're getting, it's getting late, so I know.
Derek, do we have room at the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's still in flux. Uh, we'll carry this case if that's the board's wish.
When would that next meeting be?
Isn't it November thirteenth?
November thirteenth.
Yep.
Yeah.
Long as it's not a Friday, I think I'll be good.
Never.
No, I'm Friday the thirteenth, never mind. I'm just double checking my calendar, but I imagine that's, yeah, that should be fine. Is our team available on the thirteenth? Okay.
I'm not, I'm not available.
Well, if we could, uh, you know, I'll, I'll ask the rest of our witnesses to come back, but as far as Jeff goes, in fact, frankly, I could ask for the record to be closed as to all of ours, with the exception of any additional questions that may may arise between now and then. Um, if that's okay with the board, then we'll proceed, even if Jeff can't be there on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Uh, just, just, just one question, um, if well, all right, because if you haven't, you have a new, you have a board member who didn't participate tonight, if that board member has questions and to address them, you need more testimony, then closing the record tonight isn't helpful, is it?
Well, we're going to bring everyone back with the exception of Jeff. Jeff, do you have someone that can cover that that's familiar with it? Oh, Carlos, you were also not available?
I'm not available.
Well, the next meeting after that is.
I mean, I could have somebody if we need to be, Gary. I'll just be out of the country. I won't be here.
Well, the next meeting then after that would be December eleventh. That's a Wednesday as well. It's, uh, earlier in the month though, because of the, uh, holidays.
And might I suggest asking if the board members that are here right now are also going to be at either or both of those meetings? You know?
Well, that, that, that's why I had raised that question originally, to say we can't promise.
Sure.
Hope everybody will be here, but we can't promise that everybody will.
What if we put it on the thirteenth? If there's questions we can't answer, we'll, we'll have to, you know, take the risk at that point in time. Um, but, um, you know, we're, we're, to be perfectly blunt, we're losing valuable time for vacant space that we're hoping to repurpose, and that's why we've been trying to move this matter forward. Um, so maybe if I could ask you to put us on November thirteenth, um, Carlos may not be able to be here, but, you know, every now and again, I pretend I've got a planner's license, so, um, um, and if Jeff can have someone, um, here from his office to cover any questions that we may have, um, perhaps we can do that on November thirteenth and see if we can get this done.
All right, board members, any other comments on that?
So this will be carried and the applicant will not be required to, um, do any further noticing since we're announcing tonight that it's being covered, carried to the November thirteenth hearing.
And and just for the record, Karen, can you confirm that the port has had jurisdiction and that the notices were, uh?
Yes, I thought I, I, I did say that at the beginning, Gary, but I'll confirm again, yes.
You know what? We were in transition being, um, uh, elevated to to panelists, so I hadn't heard that. Got it. Thank you. Okay, um, so just for the record, it'll be rescheduled or carried to November thirteenth at seven thirty, um, PM. No further notice will be provided.
All right, Derek, Derek, that works for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I do appreciate everyone's time this evening.
Thank you. Um, that ends this meeting. Uh, we'll see you on the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.